Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us for the formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council on September 6th. We will begin with an invocation from Police Chaplain Robert Fezmeier.
You're welcome to join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, Almighty God, we want to thank you for today where your mercies are new every morning, for each person here and those they represent. Those who lead may they be filled with wisdom, justice, mercy, and courage. Help us to govern together of the people, for the people, and by the people. It is you who gives and protects and provides the basis to the Constitution that we have sworn an oath to protect. Thank you for all those doing the work that keeps this city running and protects all those living and working within. Bless the business of today, those given the responsibility to serve, and for all that will take place. We pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you for those powerful words. Please remain standing. Councilman Kevin Robinson will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now call to order the formal meeting. Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilwoman Guardado.
Here.
Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Brien.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor. Councilman Robinson.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring. Vice Mayor Ansari.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here.
Mario Barajas and Gloria San Miguel are with us to provide interpretation. Mario, would you introduce your team?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Hello, my name is Mario Barajas, and as mentioned previously, Gloria San Miguel will be the other interpreter that will be helping us out. I'll now take a moment to introduce ourselves to our Spanish-speaking audience. Hola buenas tardes, bienvenidos a la reunión del consejo municipal. Mi nombre es Mario Barajas, y junto con mi colega Gloria San Miguel, estaremos sirviéndoles hoy como intérpretes a los de habla hispana. Deseamos pedirles de antemano, si es que van a dar un comentario público, por favor, hable despacio, con claridad, y evite tener distracciones de fondo. Finalmente, pause después de cada una o dos oraciones para que lo podamos interpretar, lo que esté diciendo, de la manera más completa posible. Gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Now I will turn to our city clerk for the 24-hour paragraph.
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance number G-7148 through 7161, S-50118 through 50151, and Resolution 22148.
Thank you. And I'll now turn to our city attorney to explain the role of public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the public may speak for up to two minutes to comment on agenda items to be discussed. Comments must be related to the agenda item and the action being considered by the council. General comments that go beyond the scope of the agenda item must be made in the citizen comment session at the end of the agenda. The city council and staff cannot discuss or comment on matters related to pending investigations, claims, or litigation. Additionally, any member of the public who appears before council in their capacity as a lobbyist must, as required by Phoenix City Code, disclose this fact before addressing council. The city code requires speakers to present their comments in a respectful and courteous manner. Profane language, threats, or personal attacks on members of the public, council members, or staff are not allowed. A person who violates these rules will lose the opportunity to continue to speak.
Thank you so much. Do we have a motion on boards and commissions?
So move, item number one. Second.
We have a motion and second. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Thank you to our incredible boards and commissioners who advise the city of Phoenix. We will now conduct a swearing-in ceremony. Please raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
I, Heather Ross.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations. Thank you for your service. The city of Phoenix provides an advisory role to the state of Arizona on liquor license applications. We will now turn to that portion of the agenda. Do we have a motion on liquors licenses?
Motion to approve items 2 through 15, except item 13, noting that item 14 has been withdrawn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Mayor, I just hope that Central Park Village invites me to their bingo night. They're a great little community in District 3.
Wonderful. Any additional comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Passes unanimously. We next turn to item 13, which is in District 1, represented by Councilwoman O'Brien. We will first begin. I'll invite Leah Swanton and Detective Lee to come forward and provide us with a brief update, and then I'll turn to Councilwoman O'Brien for a motion.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm Leah Swanton, Deputy City Clerk. This request is for a new liquor license for a Series 12 restaurant. This location was previously located, or, excuse me, previously licensed for liquor sales and does not have an interim permit. The 60-day limit for processing this application is September 16th, 2023. No protest or support letters were received within the 20-day comment period. Staff recommends disapproval of the application based on Police Department recommendation for disapproval. The Police Department disapproval is based on the applicant's history of liquor license violations at an establishment the applicant owns, multiple outstanding federal and state tax liens, subject of a criminal investigation, and submitting an application which indicates the location will be a bar versus a restaurant. The applicant has not demonstrated the capability, qualifications, and reliability to hold and control a liquor license. With me today is Detective Stephen Wing with the Police Department.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. She said my name is Stephen, but I actually go by Andy. I am with the City of Phoenix Police Department. I'm actually filling in for Robin Geikul, who retired recently. But I am pretty aware of this location and the investigation that went along with it. Western, West Side Tavern, which is located at 3558 West Northern Avenue. Previously was El Rey Bar, which hold a Series 6 license, and then prior to that was the Last Stop Sports Bar and Grill, also holding a Series 6 license. Before that, it was the Hideaway Lounge West Side, which also, again, a Series 6 license. And then even before that, all the way back to 2011, was a Spuds Bar, a Series 6 license. You can see the trend there. That building, since at least past 10 years, was a Series 6 liquor license, a bar. But today, Raymond Kubik is trying to obtain a Series 12 restaurant license. Mr. Raymond has a lot of experience in the bar world. He had nine years over at the Hideaway Lounge, which was the east version of the Hideaway West Side version. During that time, there was multiple violations, 10, excuse me, 12 in the last nine years, 10 under Raymond's control, and there's been a pattern of it with no, no change. Some of these violations were failure to report acts of violence, multiple times, selling without license, disorderly conduct, and so forth. Like mentioned earlier, he is currently being investigated as a, in a criminal matter. And based off of all those, I don't believe Mr. Raymond is capable, qualified, or reliable to hold a Series 12 liquor or restaurant license at this establishment.
Thank you for that important testimony. We have a Troy Froderman who is online and available to speak. If necessary, I will turn to the Councilwoman for the district.
I move to recommend item 13 for disapproval based on the Police Department's recommendation of disapproval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
City Clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business planning, and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve items 16 through 71, except the following: items 34, 35, and 65 through 69, noting that item 63 is being withdrawn, item 70 is being continued to November 1st, 2023, item 71 is being continued to September 20th, 2023, and excluding these items for virtual public comment, 19, 20, 67, 68, 69, 70, and 71. And can the clerk confirm if there are any other items that should be excluded for in-person public comment?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, and also excluding item 37. That would be item 37.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
We next go to item 19, Maricopa Association of Governments. Do we have a motion?
I move item 19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have four members of the public to address the council. We'll begin with John, followed by Barbara.
Hello, I'm John Chadwick. Thank you, councilpeople, for bringing me up to speak. And what I'm concerned about is the MAG is a council of governments, and it seems like the citizens are kind of removed from that. Having input where the council of governments is just making decisions without, maybe some of these things should go before this, a vote for the, with the citizens. And also the Regional Planning Agency, which they serve as, it just seems like they're leaving the citizens out of the loop on this. And a lot of these issues have to do with these 50-minute cities and the Green New Deal stuff that isn't really mentioned. And I think they should put it off as doing any moves forward on it until maybe we can get more information to the citizens, to the details of this whole thing. Thank you.
Barbara is next, followed by Carol.
Hi, good afternoon. I've lived in Arizona for over 20 years now, and I never knew, actually, this corporation existed until recently. I did attend a meeting of theirs, and it is very disconcerting, as a taxpayer in Arizona, to have unelected people making decisions and using tremendous amount of our resources to make decisions that aren't based on what the public wants. Again, there is a lot of Green New Deal initiatives in their planning, and I don't know how these people are held accountable when they don't do what the public wishes to do. We pay our salaries to our government officials. They're supposed to work for us and act upon what we, the people of this state, want. And we have a perfect example of California to look at, of things not to do. And too much governance, I think, clouds too much of good decision-making. And I think what they do could very easily be placed on other organizations that we already have, like transportation. They make a lot of transportation decisions on behalf of us, about slimming down our roads, trying to go to electric vehicles, which I don't know if everybody just read in the paper how a semi-electric truck just caught on fire, because these batteries aren't good in the heat or in salt. But yet, this continued push for electric vehicles when we don't have the infrastructure, and quite frankly, they could be very dangerous if somebody's caught inside when the vehicle sets on fire. I think when it comes to the money that is spent in this state, that every, the people here in this room should be able to have people that answer to them. These people are unelected. None of us know who these people are, and I think we deserve to know who these people are, and we shouldn't certainly be spending $252,000 to belong to this organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol is next, followed by Leslie, our final speaker.
Sorry, I tried to get the next two, so you know it's your time coming.
Good afternoon. Maricopa County Association of Governments should be abolished. We already have Phoenix city officials that we have elected, and so does each city. We have a county board of supervisors. There is no need for an additional bureaucratic board. Spending over $200,000 is a waste of taxpayer money, so officials can plan things together and be influenced by lobbyists, especially those pushing for more transit. It feels like another way to inspire, conspire against the public rather than work for our benefit. Please remember on whose behalf you are supposed to be working. Thank you.
Now, Leslie.
Okay. I'm just going to reiterate some of what they said, that there's like some boundaries that have been stepped past. Ms. Kate, Ms. Mayor, I've tried to call you and get ahold of you, and I can't, because I have to go through some kind of thing where I can set up an appointment possibly with you. You have no email. There's no way to communicate with you. You're the mayor. It seemed very strange to me that you're so off-limits that a conversation can't happen. So I just want to remind you that Arizona Constitution, Article 2, Section 2, political power and the purpose of government. It says all political power is inherent in the people, and the governments derive their powers from the consent of the governed. When you take your oath, everyone sitting up here behind the, behind the table, very sweet lady right there, Ms. Pastor, thank you for keeping me posted there, but every single one of you, when you take that oath, you've sworn that you're going to uphold the Constitution. You've sworn to consent to be governed by we, the people. And what I hear is people coming up here and saying that there's boundaries that are being overstepped. We're hearing that another group of people that aren't even elected officials are making major, major decisions on how it's going to affect all the people in here, whether we, they know it or not. That's what's happening. And so we're asking you to remember that you've taken your oath, because it also says that that your oath is your bond. In, in the Maxim's Law, it lets you know that you can't even, Maxim Law 11A, it says delegated power cannot be again delegated. So you guys have jobs you're supposed to do, and now you're delegating them to people who are trying to affect our lives. And so we're asking you to remember that. And I am going to appeal to you to please get yourself an email. Mayor, you're the mayor. You should be accessible to us. Thank you.
That concludes public comment. I'm looking forward to supporting our membership in the Maricopa Association of Governments. I am one of three elected officials who have served up here on different boards at MAG, and we have worked on important work, including our regional homeless strategy and a transportation plan passed unanimously by the mayor, mayors, and tribal leaders of Maricopa County. Any additional comments? Roll call. Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes, I just want to make it very clear that those that make the final decisions or take a vote are the ones that are elected official and have been sworn. So I just want to be very clear on that. They're sworn elected officials that make major decision, regional transportation, homelessness, homelessness, and a number of other items. So I'm just wanting to put it on the record.
Well said. Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 8-1.
Item 20 is League of Cities.
I move item number 20. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have Mary here to speak on this item.
Thank you. My name is Mary, and I'm opposed to the Phoenix paying the National League of Cities $51,410. Phoenix Mayor Kate Gallego is at the forefront of a globalist effort to ban meat, dairy, and private cars by 2030. Gallego sits on the Steering Committee of C-40 Cities, the globalist climate coalition of over 100 cities globally planning and coordinating a centralized system controlling consumer consumption. The coalition declared that consumption in high-income cities needed to be reduced by two-thirds to avert a climate crisis. The prediction was based-
Please comment on the League of Cities.
Pardon me?
We are only taking comment on League of Cities. If you'd like to comment on other items, we have the call to the public at the end. You have to make your comment connected to the League of Cities.
Well, I'm just saying that you're involved in this other C-40 cities to-
And you may make that comment at public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Calvo.
Mayor, councilmembers, good afternoon. Thank you for letting us speak today. The payment is $51,000 to the League of Cities to lobby the White House and the legislature at the federal level. And in my opinion, it would be better if we use that money for something else. We can't continue doing the same stuff and expecting different results. And we've been in this contract for many years, and it's time to change course, and it's time to actually have leadership within the council to represent itself when lobbying the White House and the federal legislature. Therefore, I wholly support a vote no on this agenda item, and please redirect the money towards something that is useful, more useful than paying lobbyists. Thank you.
Any comments?
So I will make a comment on the National League of Cities. We just had a conference last week. Four, I think five of us were there, represented at the League. I believe five of us spoke at different sessions about a number of things that we are doing within the city to help other cities. The National League of Cities is also, and that's the Arizona, and then we go to the National League of Cities, where it's a whole nother level of where we're able to work with other cities and get best practices and be able then to learn from one another and be, be able to bring those best practices to the National League of Cities. So I just want to be clear that this is, this is where government, where government, where we're able to then learn best practices from other cities and other elected officials on how we can improve our city. So I will be voting yes.
Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington. O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 8-1.
We next turn to item 34, which is an application for USDOT grants through the bipartisan infrastructure law. I will turn to the Vice Mayor for a motion.
I move item number 34. Second.
And we, it's an important priority for Districts 7 and 8. We will turn to our District 7 lead, Vice Mayor Ansari, for comments.
Thank you, Mayor. So this planning grant is for the Levine Area Command Channel, and it would be a huge win for the Levine area, which, as you mentioned, District 7 shares with District 8. This isn't the first one we've applied for. In fact, we were pretty close to getting a RACE grant a few months ago, and I want to give my sincere thank you to Mario and all of the city departments involved in pursuing every possible federal opportunity to revitalize this linear park. This 5.5-mile active transportation corridor can be a model for, if we properly activate it, as it's a flood control channel. My team and community members have worked to recently install a bike pump fix-it station on 59th Avenue using last year's participatory budget funds, and we look forward to more investments very soon. So thank you so much.
Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to also echo what Councilwoman Ansari mentioned about the Levine Conveyance Channel. It is a great opportunity where we
It is a great opportunity where we mix, I call it a mixed-use public facility. Not only do you have drainage of transportation, but it's also an area where our community congregates. So I too, I know this is our second opportunity presented for federal funding, and I hope that we are successful. We have seen more than 75 community members rally and come together for this project, and I'm hopeful that this, the second time, will be successful.
Any additional comments? Roll call. Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor. Robinson.
Yes.
Stark. Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 9-0. Item 35 is an agreement with the Arizona Diamondbacks Foundation for El Osso Park in District 5. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion for item 35.
Motion and a second, and we'll turn to our District 5 Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Arizona Diamondbacks Foundation and our Phoenix Parks and Recreation Department for this incredible investment in District 5. This agreement will provide for the refurbishment of two baseball fields at El Osso Park. The investment will include landscape improvements, new field accessories, electrical access, and a new scoreboard for each field. As a mom of two young boys, I have myself spent a lot of time at El Osso Park. We know how active this community is, how active this park is. We're always hearing about families coming in and playing soccer, playing baseball, and now enjoying our new splash pad that we just did a ribbon cutting for a few months ago. So we're very excited how this gem is getting these enhancements and how great, and how great this opportunity is for everyone that lives in that area. So congratulations to the neighborhood in that area that's getting this new reinvestment. And again, a huge thank you to the Arizona Diamondbacks Foundation and our Parks and Recreation Department. I'm very proud to be able to support this item today.
Thank you, an exciting investment. Roll call. Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 9-0. Item 37 is a safety, safety and vending enforcement partnership with the Arizona Coliseum and Exposition Center. Do we have a motion?
I move item number, is it 37?
37.
Yeah. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Beatrice Johnson is here to provide testimony on the Coliseum partnership. For those of you who are not in the audience, she has indicated she is not needing to testify on this item. Any comments? Roll call. Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. I apologize. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 9-0. We next move to the planning and zoning portion of our agenda. We'll begin with item 65 and 66, which are related items in District 6 at the northeast corner of 48th Street and Frye. I believe we do not need a staff report on this one? Okay, all right. So we will open a public hearing. We do not have any members of the public to testify. This is a hearing on both 65 and 66. We will close the hearing, and I will turn to Councilman Robinson for a motion. First on 65.
Item 65, thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve per the Planning Commission recommendation, adopt it, adopt the related resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Roll call. Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 9-0. Item 66, Councilman Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 66, motion to approve per the Planning Commission recommendation and adopt the related ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Roll call. Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark. Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 9-0. We next go to item 67, which is related to the southwest corner of Central Avenue and Coolidge Street. We will begin that one with a brief staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The subject site associated with this particular request is currently vacant and was previously occupied by the Hinckley's Lighting Store prior to its demolition in 2023. The proposal is for 155 units of multifamily residential with ground floor commercial on Central Avenue and Coolidge, and a restaurant space with outdoor seating oriented towards the Grand Canal on the southeast corner of the subject site. Next slide. The request is to go from C-2 TOD-1 to a PUD to allow for the mixed use. Next slide. This is a snapshot of the project and a rendering of it from the Coolidge side. Again, it's a seven-story building with detached sidewalks on both Coolidge and Central. Vehicular access to the site is from Central Avenue with ground floor commercial. Next slide. Here's a snapshot of the site and the proposal from the Grand Canal. Next slide. The Alhambra VPC recommended approval by an eight-to-five vote in June. The Planning Commission recommended approval per the Alhambra VPC recommendation in August. Next slide. Staff recommends approval per the Planning Commission's recommendation and adoption of the related ordinance. Mayor, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Josh before we go to the public hearing? All right. So we will open the public hearing. Appellant Ken Waters will speak for up to 10 minutes, and then Ben Tate will speak for up to 10 minutes on behalf of the applicant. And then we have cards from members of the public who have not yet spoken. If the appellant wishes to turn over his time to another speaker and do a shared presentation, he is, feel free to, he may do so. We will begin again with Ken Waters.
Thank you. Okay. This is, can we get that? Okay, that's good. Okay. We are talking about the Canalscape and the TOD. That's a far away there. Okay. This item and the next item, this, I'm going to use a slide on the next agenda item as well, but I just want to show you where we're at in, in Uptown. There's Steel Indian School Park, Indian School, Cowabunga's right up there. This is the site right across from Brophy. Next slide. I can't even read it. Anyways, I'm going to use this for the next agenda item as well. But number one on there, we need to cease and desist from making Phoenix TOD a case study in how not to do the TOD. Next slide. Okay. The subject site is right there. As you can see, it's, the developer has already closed escrow as of two years ago, and they accepted T-5.5. And you can see it's consistent with the neighbors. Lex there, Pavilions right down there, but we've got T-5.5 all the way up and down the line there on Central. They're going for a T-5.6. Okay. I'm, I'm willing to consider that. What are they going to give us? Let's do some capitalism 101 math here. With great civic entitlement comes great civic responsibility. I just want to do what they're getting for, for their civic entitlement. 155 units times 2,000 bucks per month per unit, blah, blah, blah. And at the bottom, you can see at a 10-year hold rate, they're going to get 35 million in revenue over a 10-year period. That's good. You guys, I would do the same thing. But what are we going to get for it? Okay. They've submitted two plans here. Chairman, give me a little water bottle. They submitted two plans here. First plan was for 144 units for the T-5.6. Granted, they closed escrow on a T-5.5. So they added 11 more units times 12, 12 months per year. They went for 132 additional rental months per year. They're getting a lot, they're squeezing a lot of development greed out of that. A lot of us would do it. That's capitalism 101. But the question is, what are we getting in return for it? This is what the Uptown TOD policy plan from the Reinvent Phoenix process was. As you can see, this is perfect planning. Hats off to Phoenix. Look at this site. This is stellar. This is an A-plus design for a T-5.5. Look at the patio on both Central and the Canalscape. This is across the street from Brophy and Catty Corner from Central High School. Huge big patio on the Canalscape. It activates the canal. This is what we want. This is, this is making the Canalscape, you know, the pride and joy of Phoenix planning. But what have they given us? They're giving us this. Now, at the corner, at the corner there, hang on, hang on, hang. Okay, at the corner there, as you can see, they intend to make that a leasing office. Laura, correct me if I'm wrong, but back on December 6th, we, we addressed not putting the leasing office and gyms and fitnesses out on the front of Central Avenue and keeping this for the walkable urban lifestyle. They're putting these leasing offices and gyms and whatnot on the front, and that's our Main Street USA drag there. We want to put, put retail out there, and we can easily do this. There's a solution here. We're going to play Tetris with their, with their, their site plan. Okay? Above is what perfect, great Phoenix planning gives us. Through the Reinvent Phoenix process, we've got a huge big patio there. What have they given us? Same view here. That patio right there, it's four feet. You open the door, and that, that's the end of the patio. This is, there's no, there's no, basically, there's no patio on, on the Canalscape here. And that's, that's ridiculous. It's the Canalscape. Here's the site plan. All I wanted to highlight here was that little green area right there is eight feet. Eight feet. And if that's eight feet, the little sidewalk, then this is four feet, five feet. It's basically, they call it a restaurant patio. It's not. I put this arrow there to highlight when you open the door, the end of the door is also the end of the patio. So there's really no patio whatsoever. Let's see here. Okay. What we're going to do here, I was hoping this would show up bigger. But anyways, what we're going to do is we're going to play Tetris on the next slide. We're going to take this commercial unit there and slide it to the end of the, of those, those two parking spots. We're going to lose two parking spots by sliding this commercial unit over. And then we're going to slide this unit and this unit up, and it's going to, we're going to just play some Tetris. And what we're going to do is recreate the patio underneath the, the second floor. So we're going to have indoor patio for the most part and a little bit sliding out. But that's what we need. It's also going to make the space premium. And here we go. We played Tetris. All I did was slide that unit that way, slide that unit that way, and you've got basically what was intended for the site through, through the Reinvent Phoenix process. This. Let's see. That's the end, okay. This is what we want. This is an easy fix. What they're, what they are asking for is basically development greed that's just unchecked here. They've already signed off on the T-5:5 transit type. They closed escrow two years ago. So they're already accepting this. They're saying they can't make a pencil, but they made a pencil when they closed escrow two years ago. This is what we want. We want patio space for this. Now, let me make a plea to all the council members, because about the only council member this does not apply to is Councilman Jim Waring. Jim Waring does not have TOD in his district. I think he acknowledges that. But everybody else, including Councilman Kevin Robinson, I think you've got a spaghetti string of TOD running through your, through your district. And what I'm asking all the city council people, if you've got a TOD project that's coming up, it affects your district too. Because if they put, if you're putting, if you're just going to, the elephant in the room is you guys bow to whatever district council person, it's in that district. So they become basically the god and dictator of District 4. And we've got eight strong mayors and one weak mayor, even though she's the best educated in the room, probably the most visionary. So she, but she can't buck the system if all the council people say, I'm going to follow the lead of the one council. And what Laura Past, Laura Pastor has only see, well, the Muse was built before your tenure. OmniNet was, was built, was, was conditioned through your tenure, but it hasn't been built. There's been no meaningful mixed use in your district yet. And your dad is basically the, the father of the TOD. He facilitated the funding for this. If we didn't get the billion dollars from Mr. Pastor, there would be no light rail. And he literally handed off the TOD to his daughter in District 4, the TOD portion of this. And we have not been seeing good quality TOD projects. And if you pass that current project as is, in the current state, which basically gets no patio, does not honor the Reinvent Phoenix process, once again, we're just, we're getting short shifted on the TOD. So I'm asking you, that's an easy fix. All you got to do is move that space. You don't have to move one column. You don't have to move one steel girder. You just move the storefront windows inside and push the patio underneath, and they've got the space in there. So that's such an easy fix. If you can't fix it here at the city councilman, at this city council meeting, let's continue it for two weeks, because that is such an easy fix and get an A+ versus a C+ or a C project otherwise. So anyways, and move the leasing office back over and retail to the corner there. So appreciate your time and hope to get that consideration, all of the city council members, because it's in your TOD district. If it's a TOD project, it also affects your TOD system. So thank you.
Thank you. We will next call Ben Tate on behalf of the applicant.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Benjamin Tate with Withy Morrisbaugh, 2525 East Arizona Biltmore Circle. On behalf of RAS Developments, which is the developer of the site, pleased to be here today to speak with you about 4600. This is an area that I grew up in. This is the kind of project that I get into this business for. And despite what Mr. Waters says, it's exactly the kind of project that the TOD envisioned for the Central Corridor, and particularly in the Uptown Corridor. And the thing that I would remind the council, that I think is a bit of a misconception about the TOD plan overall, is that the TOD plan is not a set of development standards. It's not a set of rigid guidelines that developments are supposed to follow religiously. It is intended as a guidepost and as a policy plan to help guide future development along the TOD corridor. And so when Mr. Waters says that you're, you're not getting what you asked for with the TOD, I, I think that's precisely the opposite. What the TOD is calling for all up and down this corridor, but in this area in particular, are really three things. Canal, on this site, canal, canal-oriented development, walkable development, and mixed use. And those are three things that we're delivering on this site in a really efficient way that is going to be a really landmark development for the Uptown Corridor. I'll, I'll jump through a couple of slides just to highlight a couple of points that I think are really important. And the, and the first is the amount of mixed use. There have been some common- And the first is the amount of mixed use. There have been some comments about the amount of commercial we're providing and where that commercial is provided. And this site is 1.07 acres net. We have a very small canvas to play with. And what I would point out is that we're kind of getting contradictory feedback. And you actually heard it precisely in Mr. Waters' presentation. It's that they would like us to create more patio space along the canal, but they would also like us to provide more commercial than we're already providing. And as you know, a site is a zero-sum game. You get rid of one thing and you add another. You don't get more out of the same number. And so if we move our patio back to create more space along the canal, necessarily, that means less of what we're hearing up and down this corridor that people are asking for, which is new retail development along the Central Corridor. As Josh pointed out, these are just a couple of renderings of the site. This is a rendering of our Canalscape Corridor. This is a part of the site that we're particularly proud of because it's something that nobody has tried in the City of Phoenix yet. And that is a canal-oriented restaurant and retail space. So we have about a 2,500-square-foot space, two-story, clear-story windows, so very high ceilings, very open and airy, and about 2,500 square feet of space for a café, a bistro, with its front door facing towards the canal, which I think is a really, really exciting thing because it's exactly what the TOD envisioned. And hopefully, it is proof of concept for future developments along the canal, that canal-oriented development is possible in the City of Phoenix, and we can create our own really robust and really vibrant Canalscape. The other point that Mr. Waters mentioned that I'd like to point out, and it has to do with our leasing office and where that leasing office is located. Again, this is not a site plan review process. This is a zoning process. And the idea behind the zoning process is to determine whether or not the land use in the project that we're presenting is appropriate and it's compatible. And I think the recommendations that we've gotten from both the Alhambra Village, the Planning Commission, and the fourteen letters of support that you find in your packet all indicate precisely that, that this is what the community has been asking for in this area. It's what the TOD calls for in this area, and it's what we're excited to bring to this area. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilwoman Stark.
And my question may really be directed at staff. Part of the TOD is about walkability, but that doesn't mean everything on the first floor or the first level has to be commercial. It's just that we want to make sure when people are walking along, there is a level of comfort and that they feel they can walk down the street and enjoy the view and enjoy what they're doing. I never thought the TOD was about complete commercial on the first level. Am I correct?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, I'd say that's a fair assessment. What I will add, though, is that, you know, a mix of uses is something that we do look at. To your point, though, the Walkable Urban Code, or in this case, a PUD that's modeled off the Walkable Urban Code, is really set up to provide a regulatory framework on how that project, to your point, will interface with the public ground, in this case, the street and the canal. So it'll talk about a certain level of windows, entrances, those kinds. And then, most importantly, shade requirements on all the street frontages. So those things are constant on all TOD cases, whether they be a PUD or a WU code.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have three additional members of the public to testify, each of whom will have two minutes. We'll begin with Kristen Listen, followed by Jeremy Thacker.
Hello, my name is Kristen Listen, and I do oppose this project in its current form. I'm really excited about most of the things in this project. The density, the design is great, too. It is really, going back to the TOD, Ms. Stark, I have to laugh. It's not about feeling comfortable and seeing that there's some glass windows because if you look down Central, all the way from Camelback all the way downtown, what do you see? Gyms, gym, a gym. No, that's not what we're asking for. And the reason why we're so fired up about this retail is because there is a requirement to have it, and they fill it with a gym. I live in the neighborhood. The walkable to me is about being able to walk to something that actually provides something that I can purchase, grocery store, coffee shop, things like that. I'm not going to walk to a gym that I don't belong to or walk to a leasing office. So I just have to kind of have you walk back a little bit about, your comment is completely ridiculous, in my opinion. So that's, really just looking, I would say echo Mr. Waters said, is just please look at the design. I walk on that canal every single day, and it's already a dangerous intersection, butting up to Central. I feel like I'm going to fall into the canal almost every day trying to pass somebody. So I can't imagine people standing in line, if that's the front door for the restaurant, what that's even going to be like. So appreciate the time. Thanks.
Thank you. Jeremy is next, followed by our final comment from Brent.
I do wish we had some options other than support or oppose or neutral here. Support with slight changes. I agree with Kristen that this is a, one of the better projects that we've seen along Central Avenue. It's really good in most areas. But where it connects, we're talking about one of the busiest pedestrian crossings, and mostly students, by the way, at Central and the canal. So, and we've already had a death there this year. They're talking about putting this up to the very edge. It's 100% lot coverage. So to the edge of the sidewalk that exists at the canal and Central. Simply asking for that to be made patio space, which I will counter Ben's argument. Restaurant patio space is retail. That is retail space. It's not removing retail space. It's still retail space. So we're not asking for the elimination of retail space. It's not a, you know, a conflicting argument that's being made here. But asking for the, to have more than just the sidewalk that's there on the canal on the north side at Central Avenue is not asking too much. So just put a little outdoor space there so you don't have lines that are waiting at the door. So it seems more open and does conform to what was planned for Reinvent. Other than that, it's a great project. It is mixed use. It's high density. It's going to activate the canal, and I'm happy to support it. When I'm, at the meeting we had for Central Park, Jason Morris said, "Hey, bring us restaurants. Bring us commercial and retail." So what I'd like to ask today is at 4600, if we bring you a restaurant that's big enough and will use the patio space, will you then look at doing that? Because I think you know me well enough to know that I'll go find one if we can do that. So that's my question, my ask. Thanks.
Thank you. Brent will be our final speaker. Brent Kleinman? All right, we are not hearing any audio for Brent. That concludes then our public comment on this item, so we will close the public hearing, and I will turn to Councilwoman Pastor.
I would like Ben Tate to come to the microphone. Do you have outdoor space?
I'm sorry?
Outdoor space part of this project?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, yes, we do. There is patio space out there. It is factored into the development. And just quickly in response to that, I would note with Mr. Thacker's comment, as far as outdoor patio space being retail space, I suppose in concept that's true, but in Arizona, from May to September, that is certainly not retail space. In a summer where we went through over 31 days of 110 degrees.
Okay. So there is outdoor space because I believe that I pushed through Josh this project as to the fact, and with SRP, that I would like to see the Sevens, Seventh Avenue and Seventh Street activated, and all the projects that are going to be or coming on the canal needed to have activation. And I pushed really hard on this piece because I would not budge. And Josh, you can explain that piece in the sense of what I requested and what I wanted to see on the canal.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, you're absolutely right. There are specific provisions in this PUD that require this project to interface in an active way with the canal. The use provisions for commercial uses specifically restrict the installation of a gym or the allowance for that commercial area for a leasing office. It cannot be things that are at the exclusive use of the residence, and that's a standard here. Now, there could be space on the ground floor that could allow for that, but that can't count towards their minimum amount of commercial that they're required to provide on the ground floor. With respect to the canal activation, as mentioned, I think earlier in the presentation, there's a contribution from this developer for a quarter million dollars towards enhancing the Canalscape. That, along with the project that's coming down to the west, will really provide an enhanced opportunity for folks to enjoy the canal, to interface with this project, another investment coming along canal.
Okay. I just wanted to make comments on that.
Thank you.
On how I really pushed and worked through Josh on this project. As I stated early, it's really, for me, the activation of the Grand Canal. The Grand Canal throughout our whole city is one of the, is a charming piece that we need to activate. I went to Scottsdale Promenade and watched and walked their canal and the activation on that canal. I pushed SRP because we were talking about the canal and the length of it and their utility trucks, and I pushed them to really get to the point that we can activate. If Scottsdale can activate, we can activate in Phoenix. And the vision of really kind of the reinvent, some of it, is to activate the space in the canal. And we also then will be seeing more eyes on the canal means there's less danger on the canals. More lighting, which I pushed for, was more lighting and pedestrian infrastructure. And that was agreed upon. The other piece that we need to understand is that there's a lot of development happening in this space. New housing oriented along the canal is under construction on Third Avenue, and a new investment, like the expansion of McKinsey's Midtown Tavern, which I sat with and said, "Hey, I want this canal activated. If you want, you're telling me you would like to expand and go to space. Let's activate it." And they listened, and it's moving, and it's going to happen. And it's going to be nice to have a pickleball space on the canal. It's going to be nice to be able to park our bikes there. It's going to be nice to see people outside using the canal and be able to ride their bike and stop and have something to eat or meet people. That's going to be nice. But designing for the canal was also with the neighborhood in mind. This project does not have its driveway on Coolidge at the request of the neighborhood. The BUD requires the canal to be activated with commercial uses on the ground floor and calls for a contribution of $250,000 to further enhance the project interface with the canal. The request will allow for a mixed-use, canal-oriented development to be built a short walk from the light rail station. You hear about the light rail station, you hear about the TOD, and then you hear about my dad. I actually got the, decided that I was going to go back in history and go talk to those that were part of creating the TOD and pushing for the light rail. And it was actually, it was nice to hear what the vision was because I was not part of that vision. I didn't have those conversations. I was a lot younger at that time. And it was nice to hear the reason why Central, where Camelback and all that corridor area, the reason why a vision came about in the space was because that area was deteriorating. They weren't close to freeways. There was no really, it was all a bus system, transit-oriented. They wanted to build the transit-oriented development in order to activate Midtown and Uptown again, in order to revitalize it. Well, that's happening. So I would say my dad's vision is happening. Didn't really know it. I'm glad I'm in the space to be able to have some, honor it and be able to see it, make it happen. It may not be happening the way some of the people in our neighborhoods want it. They may think it's a piecemeal, but that's the way life is sometimes. We sometimes, in order to get to that vision, we piecemeal projects in order to get there. They will be very surprised when we go out with the TOD and see actually all the great work that has been done within that space. And so thank you for bringing up my dad and honoring him. I appreciate it. One of the pieces that I would say that I did hear throughout listening to history was he wanted people to have access, he wanted people to have connection and a sense of community and vibrancy. And that is happening and going to happen as the future goes. I won't be here in the sense I'll be off council, but in 10 years, I will then be able to see all the work that has happened, and especially in South Phoenix. He was very dedicated to the fact that he wanted the TOD in South Phoenix and to revitalize that space. So thank you. So I want to say I'm thankful for the work to the applicant, the community. They did this work together on this project. I was just the behind-the-scenes of saying, "I don't like that," or behind-the-scenes, "The neighborhood is telling me this. This is what I like to see," in order to make sure that enhancements happen on the Grand Canal. With that, I move the approval of Z-9-22-4 per the Planning Commission's recommendation and adopt the related ordinance.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Stark.
I want to say thank you to the Councilwoman. I think you put it more eloquently. Activation doesn't just necessarily mean commercial. I had the opportunity to go to a city this summer, and they had a beautiful area that wasn't all commercial, but they had little parquettes. They had areas where you could sit and enjoy and just be a part of the community. So it really, I think, is about activation, and that's what I meant by not everything needs to be commercial. We just need to feel that you're a part of that street as you walk up and down it. Thank you. You put it very well.
High compliments from a fellow in the, was it American College of Planning? Is that right? Excellent. All right. Roll call.
Wardlado?
Yes.
Hodge, Washington?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? Ansari?
Yes.
Heyeegah?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item 68 is related to the northwest corner of Central and Glen Rosa, also in District Four. We will begin with a brief staff report and then open the public hearing.
Mayor, Members of the Council, item 68 is Z-17-22-4, a request to rezone property at Central Avenue and Glen Rosa. The subject site has been entirely vacant and undeveloped since 1986, but was temporarily used as a plant nursery and a community garden from 2016 to 2021. The request to go to a variety of transect districts is also from a series of approved and existing zoning on the site, ranging from R5 to C2, Height Waiver, and HR. This is a snapshot of the site plan. It's calling for a phased development of approach over about 10 years, proposing 1,500 units and around 25,000 square feet of ground-floor retail. These are some snapshots of the project from Central Avenue and then from Second Avenue along the west. The Encanto Village Planning Committee approved your request in June. The Planning Commission approved your request in August. Staff recommends approval per the September 6th memo from the Planning and Development Director and adoption of the related ordinance. Mayor, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Not seeing any questions, we will open the public hearing. We will begin with the appellant, Ken Waters, who has 10 minutes and may allocate some of that to additional speakers. And then Wendy Riddell, who has 10 minutes and could allocate some of that to additional speakers if she chooses. Okay, so we will begin with six minutes with Jeremy and then, okay, six minutes to Jeremy.
All right. Ready? So I'm here asking for one simple change to this project to ensure that 8,000 vehicles a day from this development don't have access to our local neighborhood streets that are already overwhelmed with traffic. That's it. That's what I'm asking for. Unlike most opposition that you see in here for developments, not, the neighborhood is not opposing high density, not opposing the number of units. We're for reduced parking. We're even willing to allow it to be under 5% public open space. So unlike all the NIMBY arguments you hear in here, this is not what we're talking. So unlike all the NIMBY arguments you hear in here, this is not what we're talking about. We just want one additional north-south street that allows for traffic control to prevent and push all of the traffic to the arterial streets in Central instead of allowing those vehicles to come through the neighborhood. This is what that looks like. On the left is the current design, this is my rendering of it, making it simple. On the right is what we're asking for. One additional street would make all of the difference and also make the neighborhood really happy. So as it sits with one north-south street, you can't control the traffic and where it's going. It's allowed to go into the neighborhood, and right now, we've got a lot of traffic going through our neighborhood. So what I'm working off of is the trip generation report from the developer, from Locahy, who provided it to Petri. And in their trip generation report, they've got a lot of false statements. So first of all, we'll talk about the classification. They rec, they say that Turney and Glen Rosa are both minor collector streets with a vehicle capacity of 9,200 vehicles per day. That is false. Those are local streets with a vehicle capacity of 1,000 per day. So the capacity that they show, I can't see it from here, but it's like 11% on Turney currently, based on 1,068 vehicles a day. We're currently over capacity because the capacity of the street is 1,000 today before the project even gets started. This information that was given to us is false. The routes they show, so they show that they're going to generate around 8,000 vehicle trips per day from this development. It's 1,500 units, that's a lot. And they're showing that only 86 vehicles per day are going to cut through our neighborhood, less than, you know, right at 1%. The problem is that, oh, sorry, let me move ahead here, that, that's not going to happen. Right now, everyone cuts through our neighborhood. So if you look at the routes that they're saying people are going to take, they're saying people are going to leave, go to Central, go north on Central, left on Camelback towards Seventh Avenue. That's seven lights on a street that's got LOS, E and F all up and down it currently, before we add these 30,000 vehicles a day from this development and the Central Park. It's longer, it takes longer, it's got more conflicts along the way. No one is going to take that route because of human nature, we take the path of least resistance and the fastest route every time. People are going to cut through our neighborhood. This 86 vehicles is a lie, and it's, don't trust me, look at Google Maps, who has trillions of data points. If you pull up Google Maps and look at the route that they tell you to take from the development to Seventh Avenue and Camelback, they give you multiple routes. Not one of them is on Central Avenue. Everyone is through the neighborhood because it's faster, and that's exactly what's going to happen. And they're not slightly off, we're not 10% off or 25% off. They're saying 86 vehicles per day, but they acknowledge that it's going to be 3,000 vehicles per day, cutting through our neighborhood, or that are going that direction. So when they're off and people are actually taking the fastest route, they're going to be off by 1,000% or more. This is serious. Adding 1,500 vehicles per street on Turney and Glen Rosa is going to overwhelm our neighborhood. So I also want to present, submit to the record, Ken and I gathered 105 signatures in opposition to the current design. People that still want the development but are begging that the, at a street to prevent the traffic from coming through our neighborhood, that we're asking for one simple change. And if you look at this, we've got 100% opposition coverage on Turney Avenue. And every door that we knocked, 99% of the people that answered opposed this. I think we ran into one person that supported the development as-is. Otherwise, we've got 99% opposition based on the current design. This is the total, that was a, just a pulled-out shot of it, of the opposition. So this is a design, just one street extra, is a design that everyone can support, that the entire neighborhood can get behind, and everyone wins. We don't lose density, we don't lose number of housing units, none of that. Everyone wins. This aligns with what was in Reinvent Phoenix. Conceptual or not, this is what people had in mind, and this is almost identical to it. We were told by Petri that the Streets Department would not allow multiple parcels. They've said it in multiple public meetings, at the Planning Commission, at EVPC. So last week, Maya from the Streets Department, you can see her quotes here, says, I don't believe that.
Josh, where's our, I got a different presentation. The previous one from, hang on, we're waiting for the presentation.
We can pause the timer until we get the right deck.
Here we go. Okay. Laura, what you did was the opposite of activation there. You just awarded developers another set of entitlements without, with great civic entitlements comes great civic responsibility. You just did a giveaway. You didn't activate the canal on that last one. And this is what's wrong with planning. If we get a bad city councilperson in for 12 years, and the elephant in the room is that that councilperson becomes god and goddess and dictator of the, of the district, the smartest people in the room are the zoning attorneys. They know straight, who to straight go to. They go to, cut their deal with the city councilperson, and the rest of you guys just back that councilperson so you can have the same power in that, that district, and it's, and it's ruining us. What's going on here? We're talking about Petri on this one. 15 acres, let's give that a project, an F, and catty-corner to that, is the Central Park project, 1.0, passed in 2019, that's the platinum standard. Laura, that's what you should be using as your baseline. We want A-plus projects on our Main Street, USA drag, on the TOD, and the Central Park, hit it out of the park with 1.0. Now, they're shifting gears here next Monday in front of Encanto, and it's going to be a downgrade, and hopefully we can, I got fingers crossed that we can get that back up to a B-plus or an A-minus, maybe an A. But Petri, I mean, the whole process was bastardized. I mean, it was done with all the board of directors right there, and if I was there too, I would have been doing the same thing as the board of directors for Can, for Carnation. They didn't want Montecito to go through. So good for them, they stopped it, but I think they were scared that if we, we say no to this project, who knows? Maybe the next project, it comes through with Montecito going in. So they basically told the rest of their Carnation folks, hey, we fought the good fight, and that's what we can do, and we endorse the project. Yet they wouldn't put it up for a vote for the Carnation folks. Go figure. Why didn't they put it up for a vote for their Carnation folks? Jeremy brings up a lot of good points. You can't be putting neutron bomb, traffic bombs into neighborhoods with 1,500 units, and they just got a free green light over to Seventh Avenue. Please, city council, have some heart. What's going on with the TOD is Willow's got it great, they've got, they've got gates there, and it's tranquil and serenity on one side and exactly what the city wants on the other. Let's start considering that for the rest of the central corridor. Next. Okay. TOD needs an overhaul, I've got 53 seconds here. Okay. Cease and desist Phoenix's case study in how not to build the walkable urban light rail TOD system, that's number one. Number two, hire world-class director of streets in the mold of Strong Towns, Chuck Marone. The current one, Kenny Knudsen, is killing neighborhood streets in this. I mean, he's all about throughput and bandwidth and getting as much traffic through and everywhere, and it's killing us. Get top management and Phoenix economic development in this game. Economic development is not in this game. A lot of people are saying it's going to be vacant, so what can we do? Well, first of all, let's get the city behind this thing and get a vision going for the TOD. Right now, you're going to pass an F project, and that's going to be a shame. This thing should be continued and to look seriously at Jeremy's fix for the traffic so Carnation's not ruined. And 20,000 square feet of retail on 15 acres, that's a joke. Should be a lot more. Across the street, the Central Park over there has 98,000 square feet in Phase 1, or 1.0, so anyways.
Thank you. We will go next to Wendy on behalf of the applicant, and then we will go to the general public comment, starting with Ed Hermes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Wendy Riddell with the law firm, Barry Riddell, 6750. My pleasure to finally be here today on behalf of Petri. I'm hoping they can pull the presentation up. So we're here today to talk about Central and Glen Rosa. The developer here, this project has been a legacy hold. It's a site that they've actually had over 30 years. They have finally partnered with an experienced multifamily developer, and they're here today bringing the project forward as a result. So the site that we're talking about today, we're bringing woo code, we are in conformance with the plan, conforms to the Uptown TOD policy plan. It maximizes this community's investment in light rail, and it transitions and becomes a part of the Carnation neighborhood. I know this is a little bit off, I don't know if staff can help me out to fix the alignment, but as you look at this map, you will see that our zoning transects that we are requesting are identical to the Up Down TOD policy plan. And if you would, you'll also notice that we are putting the intensity here on Central Avenue precisely where it belongs. We are looking at a 22-story, 240-foot building on Central Avenue and a 7-story, 85-foot tall tower on Central Avenue as well. Again, maximizing the community's investment here in light rail. You'll also notice that there are very specific stipulations that deal with how, thank you, by the way, whoever did that, that deal with how the height transitions into the Carnation neighborhood. You'll see there's step downs, that there are setbacks. This was very carefully negotiated with the Carnation neighborhood. You'll also see, and precisely to Councilwoman Stark's point, you'll see activated street frontages here, and we achieve that through a mix of commercial, 25,000 square feet of commercial, as well as with stoop units throughout, as well as activated open spaces. We are, despite what Mr. Thacker has told you, we actually have over 18% open space on part of this, 2.8 acres with a lush tree canopy, 75% shade. We have 100% three-inch caliper trees versus the 30% that is required. We have large detached sidewalks to create a very walkable environment. We have also made a commitment here to public art, working with Christina Kahler, president of Art Link, did a lot on Roosevelt Row as a commitment to public art. We have a minimum of 10% of our parking stalls have EV charging, so a commitment to EV charging. We've also made a significant commitment to bicycle infrastructure here, in many cases even doubling the city's requirements for bicycle infrastructure. We tell you for a minute about how we got here, because this has been quite a long discussion that we have been having with the community. I will tell you, this site today has probably the most intense approved entitlements allowed, substantial height, density, and intensity, with C2, HR, height waiver, TOD. As you look at this site, it is currently entitled for 1.7 million square feet. It has a 500-foot tall office tower, it was the 80s, right? It looks like the 80s. It has a huge parking garage pushed up against the Carnation neighborhood. It has permission for 2,264 units. It's very intensely entitled today. What we are actually proposing is a significant reduction in traffic by over 12,000 trips compared to those existing entitlements. And I will tell you, this is a conversation that we began back in February 3rd, 2022. To put that in perspective for you, we were wearing masks when we met with folks, and Russia had not yet invaded Ukraine. So it's been a while. We've been having a long conversation with this community. And we ultimately spent a good deal of that conversation after we met with many of the constituents and stakeholders up and down Central, focused on the Carnation neighborhood. And you will see a timeline of substantial meetings throughout the community. I think when we tallied this up, we had over 132 texts, 218 emails, more phone calls than you can imagine, more meetings, more Saturday afternoon, spent eating pizza with these folks, working through this project. And the result is 23 new stipulations placed on this case above the stipulations that staff had as place. We're closing the Montecito alignment into the Carnation neighborhood. We've increased the amount of open space to 25,000 square feet, and we've been expressly clear that that does not include leasing offices or gyms. We're talking about retail, restaurant, commercial space that will actually be gray-shelled out. We reduced the density here by 100 units. Again, we carefully negotiated the height transitions and the setbacks into the community. We have restrictions here, unloading, unloading, trash, pickup, all of this, by the way, is codified in Stipulation 19, which requires us to do a pedestrian and vehicular circulation plan with each of the four phases, with each of the submittals as we come back, to prove up that we have a walkable environment, that we have a circulation pattern that works. We have a commitment even to an interim beautification plan, to a community message board that we're providing for Carnation. We've also made a significant commitment to light rail, providing free transit passes to all new residents for 60 days to teach them that habit of riding Phoenix's light rail. We have a detailed construction management plan about how every aspect of construction would be handled to Carnation's satisfaction. We also agreed with each of the four phases to come back through the public hearing, through the PHO process, to talk about the design, to talk about the proposal, and to come back through the village. And probably the biggest thing that we have done for Carnation is we have agreed to significant traffic mitigation, including sidewalks for Carnation. We are installing new sidewalks in partnership with the Carnation neighborhood on Glen Rosa, on the south side of Turney. We have also agreed to significant mitigation. You've got traffic calming infrastructure that's going to be added to all of those intersections that are listed. We have neck-down infrastructure that's going to be added so people really recognize when they're driving into that neighborhood, and we have additional roundabouts that we're adding and a stop sign that we're adding. Again, all of this very carefully negotiated with Carnation and with the Street Transportation Department. And you can get a look, this is an idea of what that traffic mitigation looks like laid into the neighborhood, including the sidewalks. So just very quickly, I want to touch on Mr. Thacker's concerns. So I am not a traffic engineer, I suspect this council knows that, but you don't have to be one to see that one-way streets, as Mr. Thacker wants us to do, proposed, actually increase the travel distance that you would have to drive in this project. It causes people to actually drive around the exterior when you have one-way streets. You'll also notice that what he's proposing puts, adds roadway intersections, adds complexity, adds conflict along the southern portion, and adds direct conflict with pedestrians. He also has asked us to create four access points into Turney Avenue, where we are proposing a right-in, right-out. Again, you don't have to be a traffic engineer to recognize that one access point restricts traffic, allowing four access points increases traffic into the neighborhood. Same thing on Glen Rosa. Again, when you look at the plan he's been sharing with us, he's asked for additional access points where we have one. It also, I would point out, we have followed with this plan the block sizes, the street network throughout the city of Phoenix. If we were to try to break that down any further, you essentially create a fractured site that is not buildable. That is why these block sizes follow the existing city of Phoenix street network and is in conformance with the woo code, with that 600-foot block, maximum block length on the woo code. With that, Madam Mayor, I do have my traffic engineer, she can step up and just say a few words. I'm also happy to save any remaining time for rebuttal.
Councilwoman O'Brien has a question.
Actually, maybe the traffic engineer could assist with this one.
Hi, Jamie Blakeman, 10555 North 114th Street, and I'm the traffic engineer on this project. Oh, in Scott. oh, in Scottsdale. I don't know how to jump to my slides, but I'm going to make it.
I think Councilwoman O'Brien has a question first.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
It's okay, I appreciate it. Regarding Mr. Thacker's suggestion that that additional street would cut down traffic from going through the neighborhood, can you give me your thoughts on that since you are the traffic engineer?
Sorry, I couldn't hear your whole question.
I apologize. Mr. Thacker suggested that his road design would keep people from going through the neighborhood. Can you speak to that as the traffic engineer?
So can I speak to what we've tried to do? Because in reality, what his plan does is actually pull further, further west, and like Wendy just explained, there's additional access points. So I feel like that adds more complexity and more accesses to control. What we've put in place is one access point, and all of our accesses, if you notice, are very east on our site. We try not to pull traffic into the site to the west. So I think what you'll find is, in reality, is that we are on the same page with what... So, okay, so on this diagram here, I colored in red just so you could see on the left side is our development and the access points. So our access points are in the first third of the site. The other one that was being suggested pulls you further in. You can see by that red box, and adds additional access points. So I would think, so I think I want to circle back to the fact that our goal is really the same as their goal. We do not want traffic going into the neighborhood. If you look at all the mitigation measures that we've taken into place is to add that friction to the west side of the development. I don't know if we can jump to this. Is it backwards? Okay, so if we go to, and does it have this one after that? So if we look at this, this is straight out of the city of Phoenix traffic, their design standards. And if you look at this on the left side of the page, it talks about how a collector, traffic volumes are up to 8,000. And then, at the same time, the local is 1,000, right? You can see that highlighted. What I want to show is, like, on the next page should have cross-sections. The top right, and I know it's hard to see, the top right is a collector, and it's 30 feet, 36 feet wide. The bottom left is also a local, two different classifications, right? One is 8,000, one is 1,000. But to someone driving this, it's the same 36 feet in width. So what we wanted to do is, we don't want to have that confusion with drivers. We're trying to add the mitigations to the west to slow the streets down, create friction. We added chokers, mini roundabouts, traffic circles. We've also added sidewalks, which I really believe makes it have a more neighborhood feel. If I could just really quickly conclude with slide number 54.
That one I'm going to need help with. You could jump to slide 54 for us.
Oh, wait, if we stop on one of these really quick. So if you look at these very closely, what the purple route is saying going through the neighborhood, the blue route is taking the arterial roadways. If you can see on these, you will see traffic mitigation, all those dots, the green, the purple, the blue, those are additional traffic mitigations we put along the way to really create that friction to slow traffic down on those routes, really making the fastest route taking Central, jumping to 54 if we can.
It's the, I think it's the last.
No, it's not. It's definitely not the last. It's okay, just speak to it.
Okay, so we have a quote that is by FHWA, and basically it supports that, it says, quote, "A traffic calming measure can cause a reduction in average vehicle speed or in the range of speeds observed. The speed reduction could result in a shift of traffic from the roadway." That is our goal. We have implemented these traffic measures in the hopes of encouraging folks to take Central. So I think we're, we're on the exact same page.
Thank you.
So what I understand, I don't know if I can step in there. What I understand in hearing is that there are a number of traffic litigations that have been placed throughout the neighborhood.
Yes.
Not just the west. It's been throughout the whole neighborhood. There's been traffic calming pieces.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Pastore, that is absolutely correct.
And that, because Josh and I talked about this this morning, because I received Jeremy's email from yesterday, or this morning, regarding going through the neighborhood, but actually we were talking, and I don't have the diagram, but when they come out, you're, it's, you automatically have to go right.
Again, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Pastore, there is a stipulation in here that requires everyone on Turney to be only right in and right out. So anyone leaving the development would have to leave either on Turney, on Central Avenue, or to come south to Glen Rosa where there's a signalized intersection. And I think Jamie's point was, we've also added so much traffic mitigation throughout the overall neighborhood that even further reduces the likelihood of anyone intending to cut through the neighborhood traffic. And certainly, Councilwoman O'Brien, adding more streets into the neighborhood, it just stands to reason, creates more traffic into the neighborhood. By reducing the streets, by pushing it towards Central, by adding all of this mitigation, we have really minimized traffic into the neighborhood.
Thank you. Any additional questions? All right, we will now go to citizen comment. We'll begin with Ed Hermes, followed by Jennifer Garrett.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I appreciate it, members of the city council. My name is Ed Hermes. I am the president of the Carnation Neighborhood Association. This is the neighborhood in which this development is located. I live at 212 West Montecito in Phoenix. I live as close to this development as you possibly can get. You saw my house on many of those slides, because you can't take a picture of the development without seeing my, my house. So I've been trying to keep it tidy for those pictures to be taken. We have worked with this developer and with the city of Phoenix for the last 16 months or more on this development. I have been in, in more meetings about this development than I can count, and it's been the topic of the neighborhood since I moved in almost 10 years ago and since I joined the Carnation Neighborhood Association Board about seven years ago. And I will say, first of all, kudos to the Planning and Zoning Department and to Josh specifically and his staff for working with us and coming down at our level as a neighborhood. Josh and I and other members of the community and his staff, we walked the neighborhood talking about this development. These stipulations were very thoughtfully put together and negotiated and going through each one of these streets, each one of these parts of the neighborhood. And so I appreciate all of what city staff has done to help, help put that together. Now, this plan has come through a lot of permutations. In the beginning, there was a lot of consternation, a lot of concern from the neighborhood about it, but through these positive stipulations, many of which came at the very end, right before the Encanto Village Planning Committee, especially new sidewalks for the neighborhood, roundabouts, traffic mitigation, we as a Carnation Neighborhood Association do support this development. We want to see more housing in our community. We want to see more activation along Central. We didn't want to be a "not in my backyard" type of neighborhood. We wanted to welcome it with these important stipulations in place. So thank you so much.
Jennifer is next, followed by Mark.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Jennifer Garrett, and I'm a homeowner at the intersection of Third Avenue and Glen Rosa, along the Sonoran Bike Way and on the adjacent block to the subject property. I'm here today to speak in support of the proposed rezoning application contingent on the incorporation of the stipulations that have been developed with the support of the neighborhood. Specifically, stipulation item number 36, the traffic mitigation measures. Stipulation 36, as proposed, pending a petition of support from the neighborhood, would require the developer to work together with the Traffic Services Division to install outlined traffic calming measures. The developer would be responsible for funding and constructing the measures. Because the applicant is seeking to rezone to the walkable urban code, it is critical that the city views this proposal as part of a whole neighborhood rather than an isolated island of development. Stipulation 36 proposes measures that would offset the increased traffic that accompanies the proposed addition of over 1,000 new residential units. It would add sidewalks that would introduce safe walking conditions for the connecting streets. It would add neck downs to slow flow directly adjacent to the property, and it would introduce traffic calming circles at select intersections along Third Avenue, including my intersection, Third Avenue and Glen Rosa. Along this stretch, Third Avenue is filled with cyclists, runners, and families enjoying the neighborhood. However, I have witnessed multiple instances of cars failing to stop or even yield at the intersection, cars regularly flying over the speed bumps north of the intersection, and two weeks ago, I witnessed a collision there. To our south, the Encanto neighborhood has done a beautiful job of introducing traffic calming measures. There is a traffic calming circle at Third Avenue and Encanto that provides a precedent for the kind of improvements we need along the Sonoran Bike Way for the safety and enjoyment of our citizens. With Third Avenue's large expanse of blacktop at its intersection, a traffic calming circle also offers an opportunity to introduce landscape and shade, both critical components of mitigating the heat island effect in Phoenix. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark is next, followed by David.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Mark Thomas. I have a house at 339 West Glen Rosa. I rode my bike to the train today and took the train down here, and I'm looking for more and more opportunities to not have to get in my car. And that's why I bought a home, where I bought my home. So I'm encouraged with the off-site work that you're doing, that you're recommending for the project. I think that I would like to see more and more off-site work, that making the neighborhood more desirable. It would be really crazy for people in this development to get in their car and drive down Glen Rosa to Seventh Avenue when it's a five-minute walk or a two-minute bike ride. It would be really crazy. So I'm in agreement with most of the comments that have been made. I wanted to make one quick comment, and that is, the notion of this right-in, right-out on a 36-foot street seems like it's not super enforceable to me. Seems like people are going to go whatever direction they want, so that's kind of a question. Typically, what you would do for a right-in, right-out that you don't want to enforce with police cars is build a median, which I don't think is desirable on these streets. So just a question on how we're going to make those right-in, right-out accesses function. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will pause briefly before we go to our next speaker for Councilwoman Pastore.
So Josh, could you please explain that? Because that's exactly what I asked this morning. People forget I'm a neighborhood girl, and traffic is probably my number-one piece in building, in development, and I ask all these questions regarding the traffic in, in and out and flow, so.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastore, when the project proceeds forward through the site development process, one of the aspects of our review will be the proposed private access, private accessway network and the corresponding driveways. In this case, there's a stipulation for that driveway on Turney to only be right-in, right-out. And so what the developer will be required to demonstrate is, is the design of that traffic measure done in a way to facilitate that traffic movement. And one of the considerations that staff will also evaluate is what's going on in Turney on the street today. If you're familiar with that street, it's a common place for on-street parking, especially if you're going to the restaurant just to the north. They'll look at the turning radius and whether or not a left turn in that configuration could actually happen. So the full intent of our more detailed analysis as it comes in is to make sure that that design is set up to facilitate the right-in, right-out movement.
Did that answer your question? We'll get Keenie to talk to you about it.
Thank you. We'll go next to David, and then we'll go to Virtual and see if we can't get audio for Brent Kleiman.
Yeah, my name's David Wimberly. I don't actually live in the Carnation neighborhood, but a lot of you have probably been there before. I do own a restaurant called The Georgian Dragon. It is on the corner of Glen Rosa and Central Avenue, and for 28 years, I've been looking at that land, and it's been an eyesore. I actually just did a mural to lighten up the street on the side of my restaurant last year, but I'm for this because I think it's going to make the neighborhood a lot prettier than what it is right now. It will help, I think, make the property value go up, and as a, as a business owner, I'm looking forward to 1,500 new customers. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm for it. Thanks.
We'll go online to Brent.
Hello.
Yes, we can hear you this time.
Madam Mayor, I apologize for the mix-ups with the earlier items, but thank you very much for allowing me to speak on this. As a member of the Encanto Village Planning Committee, I've dealt with a number of lawyers and projects that have happened on Central and around Central over the past, I want to say, six years. And I have to say to Petrie, this is one of the best negotiated and worked-out projects I think I've ever seen. They realized that they had to come to the table and meet some expectations of Carnation, of Central Avenue, of the, the community as a whole, and they were willing to make those adjustments and, and work with people. The initial design, I believe, had 10,000 square feet of retail. Today's project in front of you has 25,000 square feet of retail, and that is fantastic for Central Avenue, being right there at the stop, being immediately north of Georgian Dragon, being able to parlay that business into creating that walkable urban area. They are doing everything right, and the traffic mitigation that they've proposed, going nearly to Seventh Avenue and making these adjustments and creations to keep traffic to Central Avenue is really second to none. I mean, they could have stopped a block outside of their development, and that would have been sufficient, but they said, "We want to be partners with Carnation, and we're going to do things from top to bottom, east to west." And it's been phenomenal to see, and it's a project that gets, should get supported and should get all of your votes in. To those that are, I, I don't understand how you can see anything better than this. The only thing I would ask of Petrie is to figure out a way to build all four buildings at once, that it doesn't take 10 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes the public hearing. Councilwoman Pastore.
Thank you. I'm going to talk about the Central Avenue corridor, and the Central Avenue corridor in Midtown and Uptown, the DOD district, is a special place. As Kent said, this, this will be the iconic street. But what I'm very proud of is the changes of the corridor has seen as a revitalization of Park Central Mall, with Creighton Medical School, to the expansion of U-Haul Headquarters Campus near Roanoke Avenue, just south of Thomas Road. And I'm also excited about the upcoming investments for affordable housing near Columbus Avenue and other housing opportunities recently approved within the corridor. As stated earlier, this case was first filed March of 2022, and it was clear at that time that the applicant needed to take their time and work for the community, with the community, because I do that. Any project, they have to work with the community. Neighborhood meetings were held. By my office in early 2023, I hosted community discussions about uptown TOD corridor this past summer. Some of the themes we heard at the discussion were desire for mixed-use development, better design for projects especially adjacent to streets, calls for projects to better connect to the surrounding neighborhoods. While these discussions are ongoing, I had, I was adamant that many of these things be placed in this project. The case before us today has the support of the Encanto Village Planning Committee in July, the Planning Commission in August, and the Carnation Neighborhood Association, who is affected by it. Consideration of this request comes with more than 46 stipulations, so that demonstrates all the work that came in here. Highlights of those stipulations include, "All phases of the development along Central Avenue will be required to be heard through the public hearing process with feedback from the..." from the community and a recommendation from Encanto VPC. This ensures that the community will have a voice on how the development will be designed, how the future phases will provide the right mix of destination services, open space, and housing. Project will have detached sidewalks, shade trees along all of its internal and perimeter streets, ensuring multiple safe and inviting ways for pedestrians to walk through the project. The planned open space and art installation will provide for an amenity along the project's western edge and enhance the transition into Carnation's neighborhood. As stipulated, the developer will be required to provide a significant amount of traffic infrastructure in coordination with the Carnation neighborhood, including traffic calming at six neighborhood intersections, roundabout at two neighborhood intersections, sidewalks on Glen Rosa and Turney west of the subject site. Step 19 is very important because it requires city to review and improve internal vehicular, vehicular and pedestrian plan. Very important because we had talked about the other plan that was presented earlier. Compliance with that step will be required with each phase of the plan. So each phase, there's four phases, it will be required. In response to the community's desire to see commercial uses, services, and destinations, I instructed staff to raise the minimum amount of commercial square footage that will, that will be part of this submittal. As you had heard, it was originally 10, it's now 25,000 square feet. And I heard the community, because these were some recommendations by the ones that presented today. I also wanted to ensure that Montecito Avenue and First Avenue were inviting, and a safe public space, that for the community into the development. As such, I instructed staff to increase the amount of landscaping and the minimum width of sidewalks on both sides of these streets. So my motion, I am grateful for all the work the community and the development team has done. This is much more, there is more much, much more to come. Further phases of this project will require future public review and collaboration. The Central Avenue corridor and the Midtown and Uptown TOD districts are not even close having their stories told. We still have a lot of work to do, and I am committed to bringing all the city departments and community together to make it happen.
Did we skip public comments on that?
Did we skip public comments? And you did comment.
Judge Washington?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? I'm sorry?
Yes.
Calle Yago?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. With that, we have approved 1,890 housing units today, and we move on to item 69, accessory dwelling units, which will be another opportunity for us to move forward with the city's commitment to make affordable housing available in the city of Phoenix. We will begin with a brief staff report. We have at the podium our planning director, as well as Trish, our acting deputy director, who I believe will start us off today.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We're here to present TA 5-23, which is a text amendment to allow accessory dwelling units. The purpose of this text amendment is to respond to the Housing Phoenix Plan and expand the housing options within the city. Mr. Christopher De Perro is going to walk through the proposed language.
Excuse me. Thank you very much, Mayor and members of the council. I'll do a quick walkthrough of this. I'd like to start off with what exactly, an accessory dwelling? So what exactly does an accessory dwelling unit, how exactly would it be permitted? The text amendment allows 1ADU per lot in addition to a primary single-family dwelling unit. It is a single-family detached dwelling unit that is required to have this permission. It's not permitted for multifamily or other types of development. The text amendment also defines a duplex and a triplex to make clear distinctions from a dwelling unit, sorry, from an accessory dwelling unit, to make sure that we're not having any arguments or debate over exactly what a duplex is. Somebody wants to call it an ADU. It increases lot coverage for an ADU in most districts because in Phoenix, many of the lots we have are already sort of covered with the maximum percentage they can, so we wanted to make sure this was possible. It also revises the rear yard projection rules to allow ADUs and other projections further into the rear yard, but with a 15-foot height limitation unless a use permit is obtained. The, the idea here was that it mimics existing provisions we have in the ordinance for detached accessory structures. And lastly, it fixes many references to guesthouse and other revised sections of ordinance to make ADUs actually possible. So in terms of things directly related to development standards for ADUs, the first main item is that no ADU would be permitted to be larger than 75% of the size of the primary dwelling on the site. And for smaller lots, the standard ones in the city of Phoenix, 10,000 square feet or less, the maximum would be 1,000 square feet. As the lots get larger, it would actually permit a total cap of 3,000 square feet, but you're still going to be limited to 10% of the net lot area, whichever is less. So just to run that by, it's always a maximum 75%. If you're under 10,000 square feet, there's also a cap of 1,000. If you're over 10,000 square feet, you get as much as 10% of the net lot area, but no more than 3,000 in any circumstance. The maximum height, as I mentioned before, is 15-foot if in the required rear yard setback, but if you were to build it within the area where you could build a main house, a primary dwelling unit, the height would apply just as it would for a main house. And additional parking is not required for the ADU. Where this went at Village Planning Committee is we'd had five that recommended approval per the staff recommendation, six recommended approval with modifications, three recommended denial, one did not have a quorum. Planning Commission, however, did vote to recommend approval per the staff recommendation by an eight-zero vote. And staff recommendation to council is approval per the September 6, 2023 memo from the PDD Director and adoption of the related ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you, Mayor. I, first off, I want to thank staff for all the work they did. I, I know we started a dialogue in 2019 about affordable housing, and then I think that's when you were first, our mayor, and that was one of our study sessions and, or policy sessions. And in 2020, we adopted the Phoenix Housing Plan, and we were moving forward on some of these text amendments, but low and behold, we had a little issue called the pandemic. And so I know the staff was a little redirected in what they were doing. But in that document, it talked a lot about different zoning fixes that we can do, which did include ADUs, but it talked about others. And I know you guys are working on those and pursuing them, and I think we can do a lot of wonderful things for affordable housing. The one concern I've always had with the accessory dwelling units is the issue of short-term rental. I actually, today was at our state conference for the Arizona chapter of the American Planning Association. And something I heard from quite a few planners is the issue of short-term rentals. And in some cities, the affordability has really become an issue. For example, Sedona. I, I think I could safely say that a lot of the city employees that work for Sedona probably can't afford to live in Sedona. And so I, I think the biggest concern I had with the accessory dwelling units was the issue of short-term rental. And so we've had a discussion amongst staff about that, and I think they've actually amended some language to incorporate that. Because if we really want to get at the issue of providing affordable housing, then I think we need to make our ADUs affordable. And so I appreciate everything you've done. As a matter of fact, I think last year in the legislature, as they were working on a particular bill, that became a big issue, and I want to thank the legislature because they were trying to address short-term rentals with regards to the accessory dwelling units. So I am very excited to say I think we need to get moving forward with our accessory dwelling units, as long as we know that we're using them for affordable housing and not for short-term rental. And Mayor, I'm happy to make a motion at any time, but I, I know we have other council people that may want to talk, and I know we have quite a lot of audience out that want to testify as well.
Wonderful. Do we?
Have a second?
She didn't make a motion. She can't second.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah. Make it. All right.
Okay. Well, I'll be happy to. So I am going to move to approve for the September 6, 2023 memo from the Planning and Development Director and adopt the related ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I'll turn to our team in a moment to explain some of the changes that's been happened. But just by way of background, the whole council's been working on this, and this is a real priority, but Councilwomen Stark and Pastor have been particularly focused on some of the short-term rental-related issues and, and looking for a way to make sure that these accessory dwelling units as much as possible become housing units. We're very focused on making the city of Phoenix a great, affordable place to live. We believe everyone deserves a place to call home, and this is one of many things that we've been doing at the city of Phoenix. We looked at all our land and put it up for affordable housing. We have looked at ways to incentivize both nonprofits and private sector developers. We've started a land trust. We've done several public-private partnerships. This is one of many things we are doing to make sure that we have a good housing stock for our residents because it's a real priority for the city of Phoenix. And it's exciting that we are moving forward with this, as Councilwoman Stark mentioned. It has now been a few years since we passed the Housing Phoenix Plan, and one of the policy options the council voted to support at that time was affordable, was accessory dwelling units. But we've been talking to neighbors a lot, and those meetings continued to make sure we thought through the policy, and, and will continue to get feedback today. But I personally am excited that this one is moving forward and hope that more people will have a great place to call home, will be able to add housing within the existing footprint of the city of Phoenix as opposed to expanding boundaries. And so that is valuable from a sustainability perspective. And in some cases, it'll mean that family members can be closer to each other as well, so we can have a better housing supply and, and maintain the things that we really appreciate about our unique neighborhoods. Councilwoman Pastor, do you have a comment?
I just want to say that, as Councilwoman Stark stated, this, this has been going conversation since 2019 and several of our plans. I do want to say that ADUs came out in my subcommittee. It was EDE. It was, I was the chair and worked closely with planning and development to be able to bring ADUs to the forefront, along with short-term rental. The two were supposed to move simultaneously and hand in hand, but we have, we will vote on a continuation. So then what ended up happening, and worked very closely all summer, was Josh on language and Trish and Chris, and to talk about what does that look like, and how do we roll it out, and how do, what do we do? The other piece was then, as we got emails from our short-term rental advocates or our neighborhood advocates saying, hey, hey, this is moving very fast. We haven't had a chance to say anything. We really, we think this is going to become something different. It's not going to become affordable. We've heard them. We have worked all, all day yesterday, all night, and all day this morning to get that memo and the language correct. And so I just want to thank Councilwoman Stark and her network for helping us and getting us to where we needed to get to today, and those that have worked on it. But I can tell you, it was many that worked on this and not one singular person. So I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you to both of you for working on this. And before we go to staff to explain what we are doing, we'll go to Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I also will be supporting this item today, like Councilwoman Stark and Councilwoman Pastor just said. It's something that we've been talking about for a very long time, 2019. And as we continue to address our housing affordability crisis, I think it's important to have many tools and be creative on how we get everyone housed, and how is it that we are able to give those opportunities to everyone, to everyone in the city. Legalizing ADUs is one way to create quick and affordable housing options, especially for our young people and our old, older residents. In my district, many families live with their older relatives, and that style of integration living will be supported with this ordinance. We see it every day. We see how families continue to live together. I think this housing crisis and how rents have skyrocketed have made more families come together. So I think it's important that we give people that opportunity to be able to live in one of these units and feel independent again. I appreciate the improvements to the ordinance that have been made to ensure we continue to protect our residents from the negative impacts of short-term rentals. We have heard a lot about short-term rentals, at least since I've been on council, and, and we understand that, and we hear you guys. And I'm excited that we were able to make the changes to be able to deal with that challenge. Phoenix needs more housing, not short-term, not short-term hotels in our neighborhoods. And this language will create important safeguards to make sure that is a reality. And I am excited and happy to finally be able to pass something like this and be able to support this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So we'll go first to staff to explain the memo, and then we'll go to Vice Mayor Ansari, who's also been working very hard on this.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The memo you have before you that was distributed shortly before the meeting adds a new provision or updates section, subsection number 10, to add language that prohibits the utilization of an ADU with something that requires a permit from Chapter 10 of the city code. That, the Chapter 10 code, which Councilwoman Pastor referenced, will be an upcoming action for the council on September 20th, is short-term rental. So what, what the provision effectively says is, ADUs cannot be used for short-term rental.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to join colleagues in saying how proud I am to support this text amendment. As was mentioned, this has been a topic of discussion for quite some time, and I believe it's extremely low-hanging fruit to help address our housing crisis. I do really, really want to thank Josh and the entire planning and development team for continually responding for our requests on timeline on pushing this forward. I think, you know, as has been stated, this, this was a key part of the Housing Phoenix Plan, and, and it's great that we are moving forward on it, and I appreciate their understanding of the urgency and finding solutions to any potential issues that have been brought up. And I think this, this revised memo is, is one of those. Allowing casitas to be built in neighborhoods with single detached homes provides the opportunity to provide thousands of new, more affordable homes to Phoenix residents, and gives many working and middle-income families in my district and some of the others the opportunity to receive additional income and keep their families close with generational living spaces. Accessory dwelling units were allowed for a long time in Phoenix, and I'm very glad to be supporting them again. In the few areas where casitas were once legal or still are, these backyard homes are currently being used to house aging parents and adult children. And with older adults increasingly falling into homelessness, re-legalizing ADUs throughout the city is one way that we can ensure that older adults can age with dignity and surrounded by loved ones. This is just a small piece of the puzzle when it comes to providing much-needed affordable housing, but a very, very necessary one. And I very much look forward to providing more solutions before the year is out. Thank you.
Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. I have heard from some of my community members regarding this item, and they have concerns about short-term rentals as well, as well as design standards for those who live in communities with HOAs. Julie, can you tell, talk a little bit about the city ordinance as it would relate to HOA compliance?
Yes, Mayor and council. So HOA rules are covered under Arizona revised statutes, so this would not impact the ability of those communities for their covenants to have those types of restrictions if they choose to.
So those HOAs will, sorry, the HOAs will be able to maintain local control over their communities and what is built and how it is built?
Mayor and council, that is correct, under the current ordinance.
And in some communities... And in some communities that were built many years ago, short-term rentals were not even an idea then. So if their CCNRs don't cover short-term rentals, are they still able to exercise control over the accessory dwelling units?
Mayor and council, that is correct. They, they could still go through their process, whatever that process is, for the HOA to update their covenants.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Julie. Appreciate it. I want to thank staff very much for the hard work that you did in a very short period of time getting out to all of our villages. I am happy to support this item today because it does two things. It still maintains local control where we have HOAs with CCRs, but we also give property owners the opportunity to have an accessory dwelling unit, a casita, an in-law suite on their property, and improves the number of housing hopefully we will have, whether that is for it to be a long-term rental or generational, multi-generational living. So thank you again for all your work. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Robinson?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I don't want to belabor the point, but I know a lot of what everybody has said is pretty much what I have been dealing with within my council district, and my staff has been diligent about getting back to folks and getting to the answers, getting to, or getting an answer back to folks that were asking. But if I could, Josh, if I can ask you or someone on your staff to just speak to a little bit about what Flagstaff has experienced, simply because, you know, they've been through this, and, you know, folks have, were worried about what might happen or what could happen, and like everyone has said, the information's been put forward, and the memo really covers everything, and I'm really grateful for that. But could we speak to a little bit about Flagstaff's history, the best you can?
Mayor, Councilman Robinson, Mr. DePero did a significant amount of research and did reach out to Flagstaff to better understand their ordinance. I think Chris can speak to how our ordinance compares to the Flagstaff ordinance. I don't think we got a ton of information from Flagstaff about how they're, how they're implementing it and where their successes are, but I'll let Chris talk about how our ordinance compares to Flagstaff's.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and, excuse me, Councilman Robinson. I did reach out to Flagstaff, actually spoke, I left a message for the planning manager, this was some weeks back, and who was out of the office and said, please contact the planning, the community development director. Apparently, I didn't rate high enough to get calls back, so I did not get to actually speak to either of them directly. What I can tell you about Flagstaff's ordinance is that Flagstaff does have provisions for covenants on the property, and that was one thing we had considered for a while. So Flagstaff's ordinance does have a thing that says that if you would like to have an ADU, that you have to record a covenant that says that you either own or occupy one of the units, either the primary dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling unit, or you have to rent them both together without further subleasing. So basically, it was saying that if you want to put an ADU, you can't do it to just rent separately from the property unless you own or occupy one of them. They also have a rental incentive for long-term rentals that says that if you wish to rent the two different units on the property separately, if you have a further covenant that says you will not rent it for anything less than 31 days, that you can rent them separately. So their ordinance does read that way. Ours is a little bit different in terms of what's proposed by the memo. It just simply is an outright, you may not use an ADU for a short-term rental. It's a little simpler, to be honest with you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilwoman Hodg, Washington?
One of the benefits of going after everybody else is they get all, they get to say what everything's stated. So I too am a supporter of the accessory dwelling units. I think it provides a much-needed benefit. It's no surprise to those that know me. I believe in an increase in our housing stock is one of the ways that we do address the problems that we see right now with our market rates, as well as we have a growing unsheltered population, and we do that by providing spaces for those individuals to live. I wanted to, my question just piggybacks off of Councilwoman Robinson's, when you talked about the covenants that the ordinance will provide, who, one of the questions that my constituents has asked is, who will be responsible for the enforcement of those covenants?
Mayor and Councilman Washington, Hodg Washington, excuse me. The current memo actually replaces the covenant language that we had originally proposed with the simple prohibition on the use of an ADU as a short-term rental. Therefore, there would be no covenant enforcement under the current version of the ordinance that we've submitted.
And I guess I should say it a little different. What would be the enforcement mechanism if someone were to be found to be using the ADU as a short-term rental?
Mayor, members of the, Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hodg, Washington, it would be seen as a violation of the zoning ordinance, and all violations of the zoning ordinance are generally addressed and administered and enforced by our Neighborhood Services Department. So a complaint could be, would be filed, and an investigation would be done, potentially noted violation, violation issued, and then it would proceed through the normal review process and enforcement process administered by NSD.
Thank you for that clarification, because like I said, that was one of the concerns they had, is whether or not the community would be the ones entrusted to enforce that neighbors against neighbors. So I too am supportive of the accessory dwelling units ordinance because it provides additional opportunities for housing for especially, we'll see, I anticipate we'll see it in more co-generational living spaces as well as for students, and it just frees up our, our more market, market rate premise units for those that need it more. So I am looking forward to supporting it.
Thank you. Any additional comments before we go to public comment? Yeah, Councilwoman Stark?
Just as a point of clarification, if this does pass, as we do with various different types of permitting, you will put together a checklist to help people walk through it. They may explain further the CCNRs issue, if there's historic preservation or if they're, so just to help people out as they go through our permitting process. I, I'm assuming you're going to do that. I just like to hear that on the record.
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, happy to report. We've already started.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. And I think we'd also talked about Councilwoman Hodg, Washington, and other colleagues want to make sure we keep track of how many are built so we can understand all of the tools we have and what impact they're having on our housing supply, which will also help us make better public policy.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I think it's important for us to keep a metric of how the ADUs are actually being utilized in our communities.
Councilman Waring?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't mean to be a wet blanket, but we obviously have a short-term rental issue right now, and part of the issue is we don't have an army of police officers or neighborhood services or anything else to go address the issues as they pop up. We have enough problems picking up shopping carts in some kind of timely fashion, and part of that's just problems that a lot of big businesses are having, hiring. But, I mean, realistically, I've personally had experiences where residents have called me and said, for example, somebody's living in a camper on this property, and you're not supposed to be doing that. So we dutifully send out investigators to check, but if nobody pops out of the camper while they're there, nothing ever happens, and then a couple of days later, the neighbor's like, well, here's a video of the person coming out of the camper. Of course, you can't really prove the person's living in the camper and so forth. What assurance is what I have that enforcing all this is going to be different, because this is going to be a lot more widespread. There's a lot of moving parts, and I just, I'm afraid if people cheat, we're not really going to be able to do anything about it, and that does come up. People don't sign up for short, the short-term rental list. We really only find out about it until there's gunfire or something. I mean, we're not going to be able to peer into people's homes. We just had a situation a week ago, and just within walking distance of my house, where somebody apparently built a sports court in 2019. Of course, it's in the backyard, so the city didn't know. That person sold the property to somebody else. The woman wanted to put up a scoreboard next to her sport court, and we're like, what sport court? And then she got dinged for it. She's not the one who built it. You see what I'm saying? I mean, it just, at some point, we don't know what's going on kind of behind the scenes. We don't check every construction site unless we know that it's there. So can you address some of that and give me some satisfaction that this isn't going to be a mess?
Mayor, Councilman Waring? What I would say in this instance, as we look to create a regulatory framework to allow ADUs, one of our upcoming conversations with you will be about the permitting framework for short-term rental. And as you've said, you see an opportunity there for it. Part of what we feel that this updated ordinance does, it provides a more linear way for us. As somebody comes in to see us, to not only get a permit for an ADU, they have to come get us, ultimately have to get, come get a permit for us from a short-term rental. And so one of the opportunities we have as part of that process, as we look to issue them the permit for their short-term rental, is making sure that the site's properly zoned, that they're in the right structure. In this case, one of the checklist items that we'll be evaluating as someone applies for a short-term rental is, are you an ADU? If you're not, if you are, if you're proposing to do that, we wouldn't issue them the permit because it doesn't meet the zoning standards. I certainly acknowledge, and I'll probably let our deputy city manager, Alan Stevens, talk a little bit about some of the, some of the new rules that this will require us to enforce, but I think we've set it up and have a couple of provisions in place through the clarity and where this is allowed and the permit ultimately that a short-term rental will be required to secure to get ahead of those problems.
Thank you, Josh. Mayor, Councilman Waring, just to add a little bit of additional information there, the proposed memo today also has an effective date of this ordinance that would be November 6 to coincide with the discussion that we intend to have with you on September 20th regarding the short-term rental ordinance. And so, taking the two of them kind of hand-in-hand and becoming effective at the same time, those will help us be able to enforce within ADUs what is happening to ensure that the ordinance as, as written and proposed and as, for the council will approve here, is something that we can enforce because that city code amendment does require a permit and a renewal on an annual basis of that permit so that we can monitor some of those things that are happening. The other side of that that we are working with is some third-party vendors to help us on location of ones that are advertising and where those are at so that we can have some more proactive enforcement so that it's not just neighbors that are, you know, relaying information to you. We will be working with them as we are implementing that ordinance and this to ensure that we can do a better job of trying to address some of these concerns because we've heard from many of you that this is a significant issue to your constituents.
Yeah, and maybe, Mayor, Alan, perhaps more in District 2, I think that was reflected in a vote of a couple of the villages about this. I suspect that was what may be behind their negative vote. I just, we've talked about the bill that the state legislature passed, and, you know, I think you and I have concluded it doesn't have a lot of teeth regarding the, the short-term rentals. So I'm not necessarily sure that, that the problem is going to be solved anywhere, you know? I'm not saying this is necessarily adding much to it, but, you know, that's a different conversation for, I think you said September 20th, we were going to do it today. But we, we have definitely sent out, in my time, investigators about illegal businesses. I mean, there was one, the person was advertising a, they were teaching volleyball, and the pak-pak-pak of the volleyballs in the backyard of this cul-de-sac were driving their neighbors nuts, so their neighbors complained. Yep, there was an advertisement, but as I recall, they, our guys sat out there for a long time, couldn't actually see it. They saw people coming and going, looked like they were probably getting ready to play volleyball, they couldn't see it. I, I seem to remember there wasn't a whole lot we could do if you're not actually like witnessing the activity. The camper thing, I mean, that's come up before, but there was a recent one just in the last couple of weeks about that. The neighbor was furious because we could never really prove that someone was living in there. You can't stake it out 24/7. If the neighbor sends in video, that doesn't really count because it could be cobbled together, who knows when they took it, whatever, or somebody just left one time from the camper. Maybe they just went in and out. It's hard to say. I just, I could see enforcement being kind of tough. Honestly, though, I am, at the same time, sympathetic as a guy whose father lived with them for five and a half years. So I certainly understand, you know, the people who had constituents contact me about that, who want to build a place for their parents. I will also say, if you look at this in terms of, I'm going to build something on my property or work on my property in the interior, affordable it is not necessarily. So just know that this could be an extremely expensive, affordable housing endeavor if you choose to go down that path. We were able to make it work by moving around in bedrooms and stuff, but it's not for the faint of heart either, just. I appreciate you answering my questions, and I, again, I don't mean to be a wet blanket. The goal is meritorious, but I am concerned we're kind of having trouble enforcing the rules that we have today, much less adding other stuff onto it. So just want buyer beware. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor and Councilman Waring, you are correct that I don't want to have, you know, the council suspect that the upcoming city code amendment is going to be, you know, a panacea to address neighborhood concerns about short-term rentals. With the, the preemption language that is in state statute, it is going to continue to be a difficult issue to enforce. Like many laws that the council passes, if you have someone who is, you know, really wants to, to break the rules, you know, they will, will find a way to do that, and at some point, you're balancing what rules you, you can apply and be reasonable against the good actors versus trying to, you come up with lots of things that are really going to only cause the good actors to have, have more challenges, and those who are going to circumvent are going to continue to do that. And we will continue at, at all of your guidance to do the best that we can in terms of, of trying to monitor the short-term rentals within neighborhoods because that's what you've all tasked us to do, but we are still going to have that challenge going forward, and our Neighborhood Services Department is, works really hard to try and do what they can with the enforcement, but it is difficult, as you point out.
Mayor, if I may, in discussions with you, I think we're going to do all we can about short-term rentals, but I'm not convinced that that's going to change the dynamic a whole lot. Conversely, though, I'm not convinced what we're talking about doing today is going to necessarily make the situation worse because I think it's already kind of reached the critical mass as it is. If you want to be renting this house out, I think you're probably already doing it, whether you signed up for our list or not. I have one next to me, they threw a big party. I had the amusing, it wasn't quite so amusing at the time because I scared the heck out of my son, who must have thought I murdered somebody. Phoenix officers banging on my door at 11 o'clock at night to tell me that they'd arrested four people escaping from the party from the B&amp;B next door to me in my yard, and I want to press charges. I didn't. What are you going to do? But word to the wise, if you're in high school and you're that slow and our guys can track you down in somebody else's yard, maybe you should just stay home. But that's just another one of those helpful hints I like to throw out as an old guy. But, so I'm sympathetic to all this. I don't know that this is going to make that situ, this situation any different. I don't know that, like, oh, maybe I could build an extra casita or something. Now I'm going to do a, a short-term rental. I'm not convinced that's the way this is going to work, but I want to be cognizant of the fact that, that neighbors in my area are absolutely concerned about making a, our already kind of bad situation worse. So I am sort of weighing those two things, but I appreciate your eyes great about giving, you know, really honest assessments, and I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. So I think we, as a city, will be going to the Arizona Legislature and talking about opportunities to improve in the regulation of short-term rental. I cannot decide after Councilman Waring's story if he should be our lead lobbyist or not. But since we've discussed the Arizona League of Cities at this meeting, that group of more than, I think it's 91 cities and towns, is united in asking the legislature to address short-term rentals and provide more tools and oversight. With that, we have some Arizona legislators here, among others, to testify, so let's get started on opening the public hearing. We have about, I would guess, 40 to 50 minutes of comments from the public. We will begin with Senator Ana Hernandez, followed by Representative Annalee Sortes.
Ana Hernandez, lifelong Phoenix resident. Mayor and council, thank you for bringing this to a vote very quickly. I am here to voice support for this ordinance. I think that this is a very critical first step into bringing some relief to the housing crisis. As some of the other council members said, specifically Member, Councilmember Guardado, in our area, multi-generational living, multi-generational, generational families are a real thing that we do. So I think having the option to build casitas in their backyards would be super, super helpful to the families out in our area. We know that there are concerns, we hear the concerns around the short-term rental issue. We are going to be working on that, but I think that that outweighs, the positives outweigh those concerns. People are looking to house either their parents, a college student, and I think either their parents, a college student, and I think this is a step in the right direction to really, really address the housing crisis in such a time that we're seeing right now. You know, it's multiple crises happening at one time between our housing crisis, our climate crisis. And I think at the end of the day, it's so important just to get people housed, and how quickly can we do that? And I think that this is the perfect step for the city to do and to move so quickly to make sure that we can bring relief to the citizens of Phoenix. So again, I fully support this amendment. I know that the amendment for parking was going to be discussed, but it's going to be continued. I would also share that I am supportive of that amendment as well, so it'll probably pop up in a following council meeting. But for today, thank you so much for the support for passing the ADU text amendments, hopefully soon.
Thank you. Representative Ortiz, followed by Neil Haddad.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I'm Representative Annalise Ortiz. I have the honor of representing the people of West Phoenix. I overlap with Council District 5, 7, and 4. I want to thank all of you for bringing this forward. This is the exact kind of bold leadership that we really need to see from our city leaders to address the housing shortage. We, according to the Department of Housing, are short 270,000 housing units statewide, and we know that we need to use every tool at our disposal to bring more units online. And I really want folks to remember that when we are talking about housing units, we are talking about families who will have a roof over their head that they may have not been able to afford before. So this is really what we need to be seeing when it comes to the short-term rentals and other harmful pieces of legislation that we have seen in the past that have, you know, hurt your ability to regulate short-term rentals. We are committed to finding bipartisan solutions to overturn that preemption, as well as the preemption on inclusionary zoning. So please know that you have people in the state legislature who want to sit down and continue working on these solutions together. And on that note, I was very much looking forward to the parking minimum reduction. I had some really great conversations at the league conference and with the Housing Coalition around nonprofit affordable housing developers who really support reducing the parking requirements, and I know the conversation's going to continue. So I would love to provide any insight that you might need to potentially get that done later this year. I think it's a really crucial step to reducing the cost of rent and addressing our housing shortage across the city of Phoenix. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Neil is next, followed by Larry.
Hi, Neil Haddad, and I'm here representing Arcadia Osborne Neighborhood Association, my native neighborhood association, and also the Neighborhood Coalition of Greater Phoenix. So Mayor and Council, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. I've learned a lot of things, and I'm very thankful on behalf of all of us in the Neighborhood Coalition, a lot of the changes that have been made and brought forth today. I've learned a lot, including that the District 2 councilman can be funny. I thought it was great, the joke before, that was a joke, come on. Yeah, come on. So, a couple of things, Neighborhood Coalition has always been in favor of ADUs. We think it can have a modest but really helpful influence on the housing stock in this city. We are glad that you made those changes. I want to salute the Neighborhood Coalition Working Group, a group of about 15 citizens who have put in hundreds, not in, hundreds of hours working on this to, on both text amendments. And really, our starting point was to get people talking to each other. So today, you've addressed things like providing clarity for HOAs and for historic preservation. We always thought that that was important. Also addressed was the metrics, how do we know if we're, if this is working? And then most of all, the short-term rentals and without the restrictive covenant. So we think that part of the zoning code makes it much better and so that we're not having neighbors fight neighbors. So we're willing to work with city staff on trying to identify those problematic ADU areas if it happens. So thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Larry is next, followed by Kiran.
Hello, Mayor and City Council, Larry Whitezell, the co-chair of the Peak Neighborhood Association and one of those hard-working Neighborhood Coalition of Greater Phoenix core members. It's a pleasure to be here today. I would like for you to think of this TA in terms of good, better, best. And the TA, as proposed, is good. You just made it better by accepting, or hopefully accepting, the proposed revision for the short-term rental restriction. Awesome. Thank you so much to staff and to those who worked on making that change. Now let's talk about making it better. The thing that would make it better is to build in some protections for neighborhoods, and that boils down to having some language about required parking. ADUs, whether they're used for short-term rentals or for other family members, are going to increase the number of residents on a property. And so some provision should be made for parking, some consideration should be made. The Neighborhood Coalition has some language that we suggested in your packets that would address the parking issue, and we would like for you to review that and consider adding that as an amendment. There are also two new items that were never discussed at VPC. They weren't on the VPC briefing sheets. They were not discussed at the Planning Commission, and I think you should be aware of it, and it goes to Councilman Waring's concern about having people living in a camper in a backyard. This, these changes are actually strikeouts, strike-throughs that you would probably miss unless you read the strike-throughs. They deal with Chapter 5, Section 507, Tab A, so it's a very limited number of properties that would be affected, but it still would affect some neighbors. One of them is on page 996 of your packet. The other one's on 997. If you would like for me to continue, I will, but I'd be happy to conclude. Thank you.
I'm trying to look at the strikeouts.
All right, so I think that means, Larry, she would like you to, does that mean?
I'll just wait.
Okay, okay, sorry.
We can.
We're good then? All right. I'm sorry, I think we're set.
Okay, it's on F and H, strike through F and H on Tab A, 8.5.
Kiran is next, followed by Ryan Boyd.
Hello, I'm Kiran Goff, and I'm here in support of the text amendment. I'm here as a citizen, but I study housing and zoning policy in my day job as an assistant professor of practice and director of the Applied Health Policy Institute at U of A, where I focus primarily on how the built environment impacts health and social connectedness. So I want to speak from a policy standpoint. We have a tremendous mismatch between supply and demand in housing, and that's one cause of the affordability issues that we're all so familiar with. But that's not just a matter of how many overall units that we have, but also the type of units. Thirty percent of US households have only one person, so we know that our demographics don't match this nuclear family vision with the single-family homes. But the average house size in the US is 2,000 square feet. So one way that I like to think about this is that we have quite a bit of empty space within existing houses and yards, and ADUs allow people to allocate that space in more efficient ways, provide more options at more price points, especially in some of these desirable areas where a lot of people want to live. Also allow families to live closer together, options for aging in place, all these arguments that you've all heard. So I just want to thank council members for supporting this important issue, and feel free, I often provide materials and answer questions about these types of things in my day job, so feel free to reach out if there's any way that I can be of assistance in the future.
Thank you. Ryan is next, followed by Paul.
Okay. Good evening. For the record, Ryan Boyd with the Urban Phoenix Project at 1069 West Taylor Street, here in happy support of the casitas text amendment, and really thankful to all those involved, the mayor, the different council members that have been deeply engaged in this, the expertise of the staff, and including the fact that it has been going through several revisions. And the memo here is very nice because a lot of times we have these complicated fixes, and it's nice to actually have something that you can describe in a single plain language sentence that really gets there and gets what we can do within the constraints of state law. And that was one of our biggest challenges here. By no means will casitas be the silver bullet that solves the housing crisis. Let's just be honest about that. No one's claiming that, but it is something that if we can actually have a scenario where an individual can go through that expense, which is a very large expense, let's not be joking here, but they can basically keep their multi-generational family there and have, for instance, if I could have my dad actually live with me but not be necessarily in every single part of the same rooms as myself, I would like to have some privacy. But I can't right now. That's just not a legal option here. So that's something that basically means that he doesn't have to go and find an apartment complex that basically competes with everyone else. And there's a lot of these scenarios where we can try to get that basically space and try to free those options. I mean, one of the ironic things is when you talk about the stats and the other studies from the many cities that have legalized casitas and legalized ADUs, average rent ends up being zero because most people are just having these use to help out families. That's the big key situation here. So very supportive of the presentation as staff has provided. I would hate to further restrict these things because there's a lot of well-intentioned ideas that sometimes make it, so it's impossible to build casitas. And so really wanted to just hearken that this is a great step forward. We've been behind for many of our peer cities for a long time, but this finally puts us at the front and at the leading side. So thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Paul is next, followed by Susan.
Hi, Paul Davenport. I just want to say I join Neil and Larry in complimenting you on your motion. I hope you adopt it, and I think it will alleviate many of my concerns. I do want to join Larry in urging you to require dedicated parking for ADUs.
Susan is next, followed by Jackie.
Susan Edwards, President of the Arizona Neighborhood Alliance. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I worship you all because we have been living in terror of this. I would, I have a question. Will STR owners be able to get a building permit to build an ADU? I don't want to eat up my time here while you're thinking on that, but.
Mayor, members of the council, again, the way the ordinance is written, if somebody's coming in for a permit for an ADU, a permit for a short-term rental, we will not be issued, the ADU itself cannot be used as this is written, as a short-term rental.
Cannot be used, but do they have to prove they're a resident and own the house? Or if I'm Joe Doakes from Canada with an LLC, you know, can I come in and get a building permit?
Mayor, members of the council, I think I'm following Ms. Edwards. There's nothing that would preclude, you know, someone that may or may not be associated with a short-term rental from securing a building permit from the Planning and Development Process Department through our processes. But again, if they were looking to secure a building permit for an ADU, yes, they could. They just can't use the ADU as a short-term rental.
Or as part of their short, they have, somebody has to actually live there, okay? I would love to see the wording of all of this. But anyway, we're so grateful. Remember, of the 270,000 estimated housing unit shortage in Arizona, about 70,000 are short-term rentals. These people, mostly from out of state, mostly corporations, have come in and swallowed that up, and they've driven prices up across the range, price range, and we think it's led to more homelessness because it's, you can't, you can't fix housing without fixing short-term rentals. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Jackie is next, followed by Lucero.
Hello, my name's Jackie Rich. I'm the president of the Murphy Trail Estates Neighborhood Association and one of the people on the Neighborhood Coalition of Greater Phoenix who has been spending my summer enjoying the heat and trying to grapple with this lengthy and complicated and very important text amendment. So I just have a few comments for you to consider before voting. The first one is, and I'm grappling with this a little bit, you might want to consider delaying voting on this text amendment until the ordinance regulating the short-term rentals has been passed. This feels a little bit like doing the cart before the horse, since what you would be passing would refer an ordinance that hasn't been passed yet. So I just leave that for you to consider. And I think, following up on Susan's comment, the main house could be used as a short-term rental, just the ADU couldn't. So the entire property could not be used as a short-term rental. Okay. I very much support Councilwoman Stark's excellent recommendation that the ADU building permit application should have a checklist that includes zoning overlays, historic preservation, and special planning districts and any others, and also CCRs. I think this is a great idea and essential because the ordinance does not address overlays or CCRs. So this would be the only place this is brought to their attention. But most homeowners are probably not familiar with CCRs or overlays, have no idea where to find them or what they are, and so staff is just going to have to realize they're going to have to assist with doing that. The last thing I want to mention is just, ADUs have been described in the press as being a right, and I'm very concerned that if you don't get ahead of messaging that ADUs with a permit can be built, then you're going to be in trouble with a lot of really badly built things in people's backyards. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucero is next, followed by Ed.
Good afternoon, everyone. Having worked as a social worker at U-Vom, where family homeless shelters is triaged, there's always a waitlist. Therefore, families resort to sleeping outside with children or separating. Casitas would fill in this gap by allowing families to stay together and be housed. Voting guests to legalize casitas would be vital to an affordable housing strategy in the city of Phoenix, and thank you for your support already. Although casitas enable, also casitas enable seniors to age in place without needing to move off their property and prevent our seniors from becoming homeless. Lastly, the people of Maricopa County are in support of casitas with a U-Gov poll from this year reflecting a 73% support for allowing owners to build casitas. This is a data-backed affordable solution for Phoenix, benefiting all community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Hermes is next, followed by Emilio. Is Ed, is Ed still with us?
Yeah.
All right. Is Emilio with us? Yes. And then Emilio is followed by Jeremy Thacker.
Well, good afternoon, council members and mayor. I want to say thank you for your guys' support with the ADU's amendment. My name is Emilio. I'm a resident out of D7, off of 91st and Lower Buckeye. And anecdotally, I just want to say that my earliest memories are from living at an ADU on my Tia Rosario's property back in, ooh, 2003, I want to say. You know, may she rest in peace, we lost her yesterday. But at the time, my parents were in their early twenties, new to our country without being able to speak the language here, English. The ADU made it possible for my parents to be able to save money to eventually afford buying a house out here in Phoenix. ADUs give young families, young people, the elderly, the ability to live affordably, allowing them to save money if they choose, whether they choose to save for a house, car, their education, entirely up to the individual. While this amendment, again, is just a bandage to a far larger problem, I can only ask that you guys pass this amendment. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Jeremy is next, followed by Dinah. Dinah, is Jeremy with us? Thank you. Jeremy is next, followed by Dinah. Dinah, is Jeremy with us? Dinah or Dinah?
Hi, thank you. It's Dinah. My name is Dinah Smith. Thank you for hearing what we have to say here today. I'm undecided. I can go either way on this item. I see some benefits for sure with families being able to live close contact. I don't think this is going to be affordable. The cost of building is just so high that I think that's sort of unrealistic. One of the things that, although one of our representatives mentioned it, that I never hear when we're talking about building all of this infill in the city, is no one ever talks about climate when we talk about this. So I Googled "heat island," and the EPA defines it as "structures such as buildings, roads, and other infrastructure that absorb and re-emitt the sun heat more than natural landscapes, forests, and water bodies." So I feel sometimes like it depends on what your purpose is, that we place importance on our climate. And so the sky is sometimes falling and sometimes it's not. So really, that's my only, the only point I want to make here is sometimes I feel like there's discrepancies. We don't follow the same priorities on every, every choice that we're looking at, everything we want to, every policy that we want to make. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand Ed is on virtual public comment.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Oh, wonderful. My apologies. I wanted to stick around, but I had to go pick my kids up. So I'll be brief. And I just am here on behalf of, it's Ed Hermes, President of the Carnation Association of Neighbors, and here in support of the text amendment to legalize, re-legalize ADUs. It's very important. A lot of residents here in the Carnation Neighborhood would love to build ADUs for themselves, for their family, but right now, just the amount of red tape and the difficulty, they just can't. And rather than reiterate some of the things that have already been said, which I agree with those who spoke in favor of this, just wanted to emphasize how important it is to pass this now, not to wait, but also to not impose any additional regulations or impediments to ADUs. I think I heard somebody mention requiring mandatory minimum parking requirements for ADUs. That would be a very bad idea to do that because we need to, if we want it to be affordable, we've got to make it easy for residents to do this and cut down the red tape, not add more onerous restrictions like parking requirements that we're trying to frankly get rid of, hopefully in the next amendment. So thank you so much, and I hope you vote yes and pass this today.
Thank you. Maico is next, followed by Christian.
Hi, good afternoon. Just for the record, my name is Maico. It's phonetically in Spanish, so M-A-I-C-O is Maico. Anyways, I just want to speak here in support of the ADUs. I know some people have their concerns, but to be honest with you, I think the benefits outweigh the negatives. At the end of the day, if this doesn't work out to be affordable for people to build, or maybe it doesn't even work out as affordable housing, well, hey, guess what? At least people have the ability to have some passive income if they choose to do so. They have the ability to build something behind their existing home. So, you know, if people are really concerned about this not working out, I mean, we'll take the wins we can because we can't do anything about rent control unless the state legislator changes that, which I think is the correct way to go for affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Christian is next, followed by Brent.
Mayor, Council, very happy, well, Christian Solario, very happy to be here in front of you to talk in support of the ADU text amendment. But the process does not end after the vote. Phoenix needs to be a leader in ADU implementation. And fortunately, there's lots of good best practices that have been adopted nationally that we can lead from. L.A. and Tucson have pre-approved ADU plans. San Jose has a 24-hour permitting process for casitas and ADUs. San Diego has a bonus program that provides for, has provided over 300 casitas that are deed-restricted for affordability. And Seattle has eliminated barriers to now increase the casita production by over 400%. I think Phoenix should be at a place to produce over 1,000 casita permits per year by 2025 if the work doesn't stop today. And this text amendment is part of a bigger movement. It's about zoning reform. There's been lots of research that has acknowledged the harm that zoning has caused and its restrictive and exclusionary nature. But don't take it from me. You can take it from the Turner Center from UC Berkeley, eviction lab out of Princeton, City Lab out of UCLA, Joint Center out of Harvard, Applied Health Policy Institute out of the U of A, SiteLight Institute, Pew Research Center, all pointing to the harm that zoning has caused. And Phoenix has a long way to go. We ranked on the seventh percentile as on zoning restriction metrics by UPenn's Residential Land Use Regulatory Index. So there's a lot of work to do. So ADU is a good first step and a necessary step if we want to achieve the goals of creating a more sustainable, equitable, and affordable Phoenix for all. Thank you.
Mayor? Councilwoman Stark.
If I might, I know that the Planning Department is embarking and looking at process improvements with regards to how we permit. Is there a better way of doing it? So I suggest you're going to be one of our victims. We're going to talk to you about some of your ideas.
Gladly.
Brent is next, followed by Trevor.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of the Council. The work you all have done on this text amendment is nothing short of miraculous. The possibilities of what this brings is really endless and only limited by the creativity of homeowners in Phoenix. I believe this is taking a wonderful first step towards helping families create opportunities for their multi-generational homes and also creating stronger neighborhoods because when you, I know there's been a lot of speeches and questions and concerns about the short-term rentals. But I mean, if you just do the math on the investment and what you would have to rent a short, an ADU for per night to even come close to getting a return on that investment, it's ridiculous and it's un, it doesn't work, except in the just, a very few neighborhoods. However, if you are able to build an ADU in a home that you are going to live in and your family is going to partake in, and your children or your parents or sisters or brothers, aunts, uncles, nieces, nephews are going to live in that home, the value of that home, the equity in your home grows tremendously, and your ability to flourish, hopefully build generational wealth, which so many of our residents are lacking, is created and it, it's a wonderful thing to start with. We do not need any more parking for these ADUs. I am waiting for this to pass, and I'm hoping to build an ADU for my mother. By the time she needs to be living in my home on my property, she's not going to be driving or as much. So please take the wonderful text amendment you've put together, pass it today, pass the short-term rental restrictions in your upcoming meeting, and pass the reduction in parking in the following meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trevor is next, followed by Dan Clackey.
Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Trevor Barker, I'm a long-term champion of building great places for people to call home. It brings me great joy to hear the statements of the mayor, the council, the public on this topic that is so dear to me. I want to express my thanks to Josh and Chris DePero for their very practical way of addressing this topic. Their work isn't conceptual. They dug in to make sure this will work well. This evening, I just want to clearly share my support of this code amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dan is next, followed by Chuck.
Mayor, Members of the Council, Dan Clackey, 726 West Portland Street in the historic FQ Story neighborhood. I'm sure over the last few months as well as tonight, you've heard some comments and concerns about the impact on historic neighborhoods and the impact of parking. Three quick comments of why you don't need to worry about that. First off, we're always going to have a process in historic neighborhoods. As a member, a six-year member of the Historic Preservation Commission, we got to trust staff. Staff does a great job balancing new and old. They can continue to do this as we have ADUs in historic neighborhoods. Second, as a 20-year homeowner in the FQ Story neighborhood, I have an ADU to my right. I have an ADU across the street, and I have an ADU 150 feet down the road. In the 20 years that I've lived there, we've had families, we've had couples, we've had singles. Literally, not once in 20 years have I ever, ever had a problem. They could have been renting those out as Airbnb's for a lot more money, a lot more money, because I'm near downtown. Never have. Third thing is parking. People seem to be concerned about parking on the street. Somewhere along the line, homeowners began to think that the public street in front of their house is their own private property. The public street is for parking. And so in my neighborhood, I park on the street, my neighbors park on the street in front of my house, I have guests in front of the house, I have other people. Nothing has ever happened. We don't need to worry about it, and it slows traffic down. So keep that in mind as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck is next, and then we'll go for virtual public comment. Ann.
Mayor and Council, my name is Chuck Jones. I live at, in the Grandview neighborhood, actually just a few blocks away from the relative of a sitting council member who lives in a floodplain. So what provision is made for people that want to build ADUs in floodplains? Do they wind up building them a foot higher to get them out of the floodwork so that their roofline winds up higher than the existing home? I am shocked to hear that you think a 3,000-square-foot dwelling could be an accessory unit. That is a McMansion for those of us who live in Grandview with homes that are about 1,700 square feet. And I don't understand the opposition to required parking. If the ADUs all take up all the parking, then when you have your own party, then your guests have no place to stay. I think there are a lot of nuances that have not been thought through about this, and I would like to propose an alternate solution instead of being entirely negative. And that would be for the city to buy up parcels discreetly so the cost doesn't go through the roof, hopefully as close to light rail as you possibly can, and then put out competitive bids for a developer to build affordable housing. Rather than piecemeal things, you're looking at streets being torn up for sewer and water lines and aging infrastructure that being tapped into could cause harm. I think of cul-de-sacs where there's not room to park a Mini Cooper in front of somebody's house as it is, and you put an ADU there with somebody and no required parking. These will become magnets for investors in years to come. They sound like a panacea. Now, it's great for somebody, but the man on the phone didn't mention if mom lives out of state or not, and if he's bringing mom to live with him in the ADU from out of state, that's not solving our housing. And the poster person they put on the news the other night who's going to bring his mom in from out of state, that's not going to solve housing. And I think there's a better way that you could accomplish this without this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann is next, followed by Shane.
Hello, this is Ann Bummersbach. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. Well, I really just signed up to attend, not really to speak, but I will say, thank everyone for all the work they've done on this. I appreciate all the hard work that everyone has done. And one other quick comment, a lady previously mentioned that she couldn't find an email address for the mayor. And if you just Google "email address of Mayor Kate Gallego Phoenix," you'll get her email address. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann.
All righty.
Appreciate that, that very technical tool of Google. Shane is next.
Hey, my name is Shane Gore, 2035 West Astor Drive. I just wanted to mention briefly, I think that the housing type diversity is really an important aspect of approving ADUs. I think that Phoenix has the challenge of attracting and maintaining the workforce talent that we need to continue growing as a vibrant city. And if we don't allow dynamic, flexible housing situations, we're not going to be able to retain those people. And other cities are going to allow these things, and we're going to end up being left behind. So I think it's a no-brainer, obvious, should be approved. I think the minor changes that have been made to it are good changes. And on that note, I urge the council to consider the parking reform amendment as drafted by staff, not as modified by the Planning Commission. Planning Commission is not always right. I think they did a great job with ADUs. I think they missed the mark on the parking regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. And for our staff, do we get everyone speaking?
Yes, Mayor, we did.
Wonderful. And for folks interested in parking, the Transportation Committee will be hearing that. And for folks interested in more work on short-term rentals, we will have that next formal meeting on the 20th. All right. We will close the public hearing. We have a motion on the table from Councilwoman Stark, seconded by Laura Pastore. Any additional comments or questions?
I do.
Councilwoman Pastore.
No, it's always me. There were several questions asked by the audience, and one was wording. You addressed parking, and the other one was language. And the language that I think we were speaking about is from the Neighborhood Coalition of Greater Phoenix that they wanted language improvements regarding the HP and the HOA piece. Can you explain that? And then the floodplain.
Mayor, Members of the Council, I'll start with some of the language reference that was crossed out. You know, part of, as we began this endeavor, as you've heard, as some of you have heard me say at subcommittee, part of what we endeavored to do was to write an ordinance that would actually facilitate the construction of ADUs. We've had the benefit of watching how other cities have constructed their ordinances and been able to identify some of those flaws. Part of what we did here, and I want to give Trish and Mr. DePero a ton of credit, is evaluate the ordinance to identify where might there be some hurdles with current language in the ordinance that might make it difficult. As we looked, as Councilwoman Stark looked, and as asked us to do, how can we streamline this process? Well, it starts today by, one, making it permitted, and, two, cleaning up the ordinance to make sure that if someone does come in to see us and ask for a permit for this, that they can do so in an efficient way. Part of what was referenced in there is some changes to our design standards with respect to the construction of walls and rear yards and parking in rear yards when they're off of valleys. There could be a scenario where obviously people are building an ADU in a rear area, and they might want to have some parking associated with that. We've just, we've eliminated that as a hurdle for them. But again, in HP neighborhoods, they'll still have to do HP review. Again, on the larger parking issue, as I think you heard some testimony, as we evaluated the other ordinances, requiring a parking space, the majority of lots in Phoenix are around 6,000 square feet. If you were to do a required parking space for the ADU, it makes it very difficult for anyone to do it. Something to keep in mind, and I know that we testified to this at subcommittee, is that your required parking in Phoenix in residential lots is to be behind the front setback of the house. So that does leave the driveway area as a potential place for folks to park if they are visiting the site in an ADU. On floodplain, again, as part of, anytime you have to go and get a permit from us, we'll evaluate whether or not the site is appropriate to issue a permit. Sites that were within a floodplain or floodway would generally not be eligible for building activity. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Roll call.
Wardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Mayor, I'd like to briefly explain my vote.
Please do.
I still have, thank you, I still have, I wish we were addressing...
I still have, thank you, I still have, I wish we were addressing the short-term rental issue in a real way. I know the current legislation, legislation at the state level sort of precludes that despite what they did last fall. I just, I can't add to that problem that's been, for the staffers who take those calls for me, been legion in District 2. So I am going to vote no. I would like to vote yes, and I wish this all the best, so I hope it works out. Mayor, I would like to say one thing more. I hope it's appropriate. I don't think we're having policy last week or next week, so I thought I might mention it, since several of the staffers know him. We had a terrible loss yesterday in District 2. Doug Dixon passed away. Yeah, I know, I see some of you guys reacting. I was shocked, too. You know, I think he was only 61. It was a surprise. So, you know, he was the head of the HOA for Desert Ridge for, I think, 12 years. He's still on the board, but he wasn't present now. He's having a desert view for, I don't know how long, one of the villages that heard this. So I just wanted to share that with you guys personally. It hit me pretty hard. He was a great guy, a wonderful volunteer, and a good friend. Gave a lot to this city. So thank you for letting me do that, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Councilman, I apologize. Was that a no?
Oh, I did say no.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 8-1.
So by an 8-1 vote, it is now much easier to build a casita at your home in Phoenix. All right, looking at the board, we have no additional items, so I will turn to our city attorney to explain the final portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. During citizen comment, members of the public may address the city council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern to them. The citizen comment session is limited to 30 minutes. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the city council to listen to the comments but prohibits council members from discussing or acting on the matters presented.
Thank you. We will begin citizen comment with Beatrice Johnson. Beatrice will be followed by Lisa Blankenship. Okay, Lisa had to leave, so Beatrice will be followed by Irma Pacheco.
Good afternoon. My name is, good evening, Beatrice Johnson here. I am not happy to be back here. Last time I was here, I had shared with you that April 26, the person who killed my sister and Joseph Gutierrez was not in court, and that your city prosecutor and your city judge and the attorney for the defendant decided that he could call in on the phone even though he had been picked up by the police on March 1st. He did not see a judge. He was released. His attorney called, emailed the next morning for not guilty. Our victim's rights were violated. And so on the 26th, the prosecutor decided that she would do the bail hearing again. But he was not there again, so they decided to let him be on the phone. So, we had a court date in June, but I was wondering, how would you get past all that with all our victims' rights being annihilated? And then we get a call that you decided to move the case to the county. So you moved the case, you sent the case to Maricopa County without even communicating with our family. I came here last to ask you, could I talk to the city prosecutor's office to see why they sent the case? We don't, we haven't even heard from the city prosecutor why. It's just that it's been done. So we've been waiting since June, and against my will, but because I have people here who live here who say, wait, oh, they might give felony charges. So I asked the prosecutor, so what's going on? What's with the charges? She said, the only charge we can give is misdemeanor. I say, well, if you give a misdemeanor, then how come you haven't charged him? You're not using a different law from the city prosecutor's office. Well, I went to get the records from June that we were not privy to, and it says in writing that the city prosecutor office made an agreement with the Maricopa County to charge misdemeanor charges. It's in writing. I could never get this paper for months and months, just like I couldn't get it when he was, he did not see the judge. So you can't pass the buck. It is your officer who did not give the blood tests when he flunked the sobriety test. It is your officer who did not call our family and allow my sister to lay in the morgue for eight days. The buck stops here. You cannot pass it to county. Since you have an agreement with them, make sure this guy is charged, and this time, make sure he is in court. You guys are annihilating our family with all our victims' rights, and you're torturing us over some vehicle homicide because you're showing privilege? And the big people that's watching tell me, don't worry about it. It's only making better for you down the road. I need the road to be here right now. I need you guys to handle this guy who killed two people. Why am I back here? Because you thought it was great, you could just pass it on to the Maricopa County? No, keep that agreement. I got the paper. It says you have an agreement with Maricopa County to charge Nabaski Pekovic for two counts of bodily harm with death. Charge this guy. Why is he still out? Because they were homeless? Because they're black? Because they're Mexican? Get this done now. I'm serious. Get it done. We'll be back.
Irma is next, followed by Jeff Caldwell.
Buenas tardes, queridos miembros del Consilio. Mi nombre es Irma Pacheco. Yo trabajo en el aeropuerto, en la terminal 4, para una compañía muy poderosa, es SP. Ellos tienen a su cargo muchos, muchos restaurantes ahí en la terminal 4, en todo el aeropuerto. Hacen jugosos negocios, muy buenos negocios. Yo trabajo como cocinera en un restaurante que se llama Los Taquitos. Trabajo 32 horas porque no garantizan las 40 horas. Es un trabajo muy estresante. Tenemos que atender largas líneas de customers constantemente. Es muy estresante. Hay veces que en el día nada más voy una vez al baño, y cuando voy, la tengo que pensar. Tengo que estar pidiendo mi break, porque el break a veces me lo dan a tiempo, a veces no me lo dan. Les vuelvo a repetir, es un trabajo muy estresante. Yo pago 700 dólares al mes, comparto utilidades con una familia, no me alcanza, la verdad. Tengo que andar buscando otros días para trabajar, para garantizar y poder solventar mis gastos. Yo vivo en el distrito 8 de la concejal Kisha Washington, y estoy muy consternada porque sí verdaderamente es un problema poder atender que andar buscando cómo cubrir mis gastos para poder trabajar seis o siete días a la semana, porque 19 dólares la hora para una compañía que gana tanto dinero, que nosotros los trabajadores les damos a ganar tanto dinero, no nos alcanza.
Disculpe, si podría esperar tantito para que traduzcan.
Oh, para que traduzcan. Oh, sí, claro que sí.
Excuse me, hello. My name is Irma Pacheco, and I'm here because I work in an area, terminal number four. I work at the airport. I don't make a lot of money. The restaurant that I work at, I work there as a cook, and it's called Los Taquitos. I work approximately 32 hours a week because I cannot work 40 hours. Where I work is very stressful. I only get to go to the restroom one time. I have to keep asking for breaks because they don't give me any. Very stressed, and I only make $700 a month. It's not enough to make a living, to support the family. I'm in Kisha's, Washington's area where I live, and I am not making enough money to support my family.
Quiero recalcar nada más que es una compañía muy importante, es SP, y que hace jugosos negocios. Una compañía muy importante, muy poderosa, es la palabra, muy poderosa, que hace jugosos negocios en la terminal 4. Nosotros los trabajadores le damos a ganar.
Toma pausa. It's a company that I work for, they're very powerful. Their name is, ¿cómo se llama?
SSP.
SSP.
Nosotros los trabajadores le damos a ganar mucho, mucho dinero, y les damos a ganar mucho, mucho dinero.
And we have helped that company in that we are earning them a lot of money.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeff is next, followed by Michael Smith.
Mayor, Councilmembers. So Ballotpedia says the League of Arizona Cities and Towns is a government-sector lobbying association in the state of Arizona. Ballotpedia says the National League of Cities is a government-sector lobbying association. So therefore, you just approved paying lobbyists instead of using money for citizens of Phoenix. And then, in 2019, a document was created by the C-40 Cities, but then reshared in March of this year, and it's titled "Addressing Food-Related Consumption-Based Emissions in C-40 Cities." This document says consumption interventions are ways to reduce carbon emissions. This research sets out a series of scenarios to show how consumption-based emissions in C-40 cities may evolve in no action taken, limited action taken, or if ambitious action is taken. And one area of concern in this study is that it lays out if we abolish the consumption of food at the city level. So I am concerned that the city of, the mayor of the city of Phoenix is the vice chair of the Steering Committee. She's the only American on the Steering Committee of the C-40 Cities. And so I am very concerned that these types of policies are going to be implemented here in the city of Phoenix. If you do Google banning food C-40 cities, you'll find that many partisan articles state that this is a conspiracy theory. However, there's another document that was written by the C-40 Cities in January of 2022, which is after Mayor Gallego joined. And the title of this one is "How to Cut Your City's Consumption-Based Emissions." And this says, "To avoid climate breakdown, over the next decade, leading cities' emissions must be cut by 2/3, including the emissions driven by urban demand." This article explains the steps urban policymakers can take, along with emerging and tried-and-tested approaches in key urban consumption sectors. Mentions of reducing meat consumption is two times in this article. And then finally, in February of 2022, a document was released by C-40 Cities, and it was called "C-40: Good Food Cities Declaration." And this also mentions reducing meat consumption. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael is next, followed by Patricia.
How y'all doing today? I want to thank the mayor and city council for giving us this opportunity to speak. This is a true story. My name is Michael Smith. I live in District 8 at 1146 West Cocoa Park. I work as a cook at the airport for SSP America Payway. I recently had to get a second job at GCU. I have not been able to pay my rent and buy groceries at the same time. I love cooking and making our city guests happy, but me and my coworkers are struggling. We had a, we had a strike vote on Friday, and 98% of us voted yes. We are prepared and willing to go on strike at any given time. I'm here today with my union. We are having a food bank today right outside. Many of us would skip meals this week without the food we are getting today. Thank you for your support and time.
Patricia is next, followed by Jody.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Patricia Ray. I am a bartender at SSP America for Sky Harbor Airport. I love my job, and I love welcoming visitors to our beloved city. But working as SSP has made it difficult for me to afford my bills. My husband and I have three beautiful children under our roof, and also support two adult children with a grandchild on the way. My husband and I both work full-time jobs, and we are struggling to pay a rent of $2,450. After deducting health insurance and taxes, my paycheck is $400 at best every two weeks after paying taxes. How am I supposed to pay for food and utilities after a $400 paycheck? I don't think anybody in this room that we sit in or out of here can. SSP is a contractor with the city of Phoenix, which is owned by Sky Harbor. The city has a responsibility to ensure that all of their employees have a living wage and treat us with dignity and respect that we deserve. We are coming to the city to ask that they support our efforts to create a desirable work environment and livable wages. So I thank you for your time, and have a good afternoon.
Jody is next, followed by Leslie.
Again, we are here to remind your oath to the Constitution you swore to uphold and protect. Our Arizona Constitution states in Article 2, Section 1, fundamental principles. A frequent recurrence to fundamental principles is essential to the security of individual rights and the perpetuity of free government. So we do not give you the right nor permission to apply tyrannical laws onto the people. That includes the MAG, no meat, no gas vehicles, no milk, nor only purchase of three articles of clothing. These are tyrannical laws you are trying to put upon us. Remember, it's treason if you go against our Constitution and your oath.
Okay. So I'm going to kind of repeat some of the things, or at least one article that I said earlier, which is that all political power, this is in the Arizona Constitution, which you guys have sworn to uphold. It's the Arizona Constitution, Article 2, Section 2, "Political Power and the Purpose of Government." All political power is inherent in the people, and the governments derive their powers from the consent of the governed. You're the ones who have consented to be governed. Everybody up here, I've noticed, looks up this way. There's only one person consistently that does not. Yep, it's you, Mayor. You've had people coming up here talking about the hardships of their life. I heard some of these people, that woman who lost her family, she's actually been down to the Board of Supervisors appealing down there as well. It's like on deaf ears. That young, that woman that called in to, you know, make sure I knew how to look up an email, I actually know how to look up your email. It's getting a response back. And then when I called downtown to ask what I should do, Mr. Maddox, very kind man, very good employee, he let me know that you don't have an email. So maybe the woman who called in, she thinks you can just pull something up magically. If it doesn't go there and it doesn't come back, it doesn't matter. So I'm just saying this because you have made very big decisions that really affect many of us here, and in the future. Like Jeff actually said when he was up here, he literally said that you actually are the only American on that, on that group. That's a concern to us, because many of us know the World Economic Forum is actually trying to move in. We know the elites are pulling together their little uniparty group, and they're trying to affect our future. A lot of these city things and all these ordinance, it probably works out in some situations for good. A lot of these city things and all these ordinance, it probably works out in some situations for good situations, but some of them have a motive, and that motive is not for our betterment. I mean, it's kind of like they're preparing us and dicing up like the Hunger Games already. So just so you know, you're the leader in that, and when we can't get a hold of you... She had actually read something that actually is very applicable. It's Arizona Constitution, Article Two, Section One. It says, "Frequent reoccurrence of fundamental principles is essential to the security and individual rights and the perpetuity of free government." When we can't get a hold of you, and we can't get a response from you, and it's like jumping through hoops and figuring out how to push that button and this one, and then I hear, oh, well, I'll pass on a message, a message that goes in the garbage means nothing. It's kind of like an email that goes nowhere and doesn't have a way to be responded to. We've got so many situations going on in our country right now. When I hear of the hardships of people that are in this room, and I know the BS that's going on of what we're doing with Ukraine, and all the other little tidbit, little time, you know, little cross in the Ts, dot in the Is for the World Economic Forum, you actually represent them. You are going against your oath.
Followed by Roger.
And thank you.
Moira. All right, Roger is next, followed by John.
Mayor, councilpeople, I want to thank you for this opportunity for me to, as a Vietnam vet, a father, and a grandfather. I'm involved in a lot of organizations that are veteran-involved, and we're there for the lost and found of people that are, we're talking about our children. Trafficking is a vital concern to me, and I want you to know that when we talk about things like that and we're transfixed on other plateaus, like how we're going to feed them, our own children, food is a critical measure. How do you go to food banks to support people like this? I've been part of a union. Costs are spiraling up in this country, and it's killing people. How do we, as parents, look across the dinner table to our children? Each one of you has family. And when we go to make rules about how change, how to, you know, GMO change meat, I look at Spam. That's disgusting. I'm sorry. But I can't, but seriously, I can't think of why we would want to ever think that what we're going to, go out there, instead of pouring Cheerios into a bowl, we're going to pour something in there that's got legs crawling around. That's scary. I mean, if we're out there in the field and, and, as veterans, and we're out there trying to defend this country and, and trying to add more, try to keep it free, that isn't freedom, that's imprisonment. And I ain't going to sacrifice my family one moment for crawly things or dead meat that just doesn't process in our, in our nutritional system. I wouldn't expect that from you to go look at your children, your wife, your family. We have an oath, and we took it, and we're not going to give up on our oaths. I appreciate that you can look in the mirror each day and say, what do you want for breakfast? What do you want for dinner? That's a heartfelt humanitarian thought that we have to take each day. When we get up in the morning and go out and try to make a living, whether it's being behind those counters and behind those microphones, behind those cameras. Ladies and gentlemen, our God gave us freedom to live abundantly in this, in this world. I look across of all the people that are going through all these things, and why are we trying to depopulize when we should be essentializing? That's our prayer today. I pray that you can go home and think about that with your conscience clear before you start putting things on the other, on your neighbor and your, and your fellow man. Thank you. God bless you.
John is next, followed by Barbara. John Forsythe? All right, Barbara Jennings, followed by Leslie. No Barbara? Do we have Leslie Shepard? Okay, do we have Vanessa Ortega? Vanessa Ortega? Do we have Almaty Fard Allah?
Hello, City Council. Thank you for hearing us today. My name is Almaty. I go by Arc to make it easy. Let me start. I've been a cashier at S.S.P. America for about 11 months now, at Sky Harbor Airport, of course. The combination of the current low wages paid by S.S.P. America multiplied by the extremely high cost of living, mostly rent in Phoenix, Arizona, has driven me to being homeless and just living in my car. S.S.P.'s refusal to accept Unite Here, which is our union, proposal for the next contract only serves to exacerbate my daily stress and my anxieties for the near future. I was lucky enough this summer that my cousin let me stay at her place for the second half of the summer to shelter me from the heat at a reduced rate. However, once the summer, once the heat of the summer is over, this is no longer going to be a sustainable living situation for myself. Before I worked at S.S.P. America, I actually was a security guard for the city of Phoenix at the main library downtown. Of course, during that time, the city of Phoenix had a policy of only having part-time workers. So a combination of this and my family's struggles with poverty has left me in a situation where I'm just constantly fighting an uphill battle to make it in life. We're just asking that we be heard and that we get city councils' help in negotiating this new contract. We need you guys on our side. I, like so many of my coworkers, ask, beg, and demand a wage that supports our lives in the same way our energy, efforts, and hard work breed life into the food service for our guests at our most beloved Sky Harbor Airport. Thank you very much.
Leslie noting? Leslie noting. Do we have any other speakers? That is all, Mayor. We are adjourned.